You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to meet. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the Sand Hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one there. Hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for Freedom's Will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville. Talking about my hometown Fayetteville.
Well, good evening. Like to call the Monday, February 24th, Fable City Council meeting to order. Certainly like to welcome all of you. I think we had a few elected officials in the audience, didn't want to miss anybody. I know I saw Judge Tony King. If you're an elected official, can you please stand if you're joining us tonight? Judge King, how are you? And I think Representative Floyd was here, but I think he has moved on. Okay. Well, I'd like to welcome all of you. At this time, we'll ask that Pastor Riley Holiday from Manor Church will come forth. He would lead us in our invocation. Ask that all would please rise for the prayer. If you could please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray.
How are you Pastor?
Doing great, good to see you Mayor. Father, we're just so thankful for your presence, Holy Spirit, here in this space as we gather as a city to discuss all that you would have for us. So as we speak blessing over our city officials, God, I'm immediately reminded of a prayer by a man named Jabez. A prayer so powerful, God, that you granted him exactly what he requested. So may you bless them and bless them indeed. God, we expect a blessing from you and we're determined to allow you to dictate which blessing. Would you expand their borders and enlarge their tents? Would you fulfill the callings you have in their lives? Increase their influence? Take their gifts, their talents, their wisdom to the next level? May you set your hand upon them and anoint them by your Spirit. Grant them your wisdom, favor, your presence. Fuel our city by your grace. And would you keep us from evil that we might not cause harm? God, we admit that we miss the mark, that we don't always get things right. But you're faithful and we trust you in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Riley, good to see you, my friend. I know you, but maybe there are members on television or in the audience who don't know you. So tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry that you're a part of.
Yes, sir. I'm the Cliffville Site Pastor at Manor Church. So if you're not familiar, we have seven locations where we gather here in the city of Fayetteville and 19 locations on what we call the Military Highway. We believe God's called us as a local church to go everywhere the military goes. So soon we'll be in Cuba and we just launched a team gathering together worshiping in Germany. Personally, I spent 11 years on active duty serving the United States Air Force, six of those here in Joint Special Operations Command, which brought me to the great town of Fayetteville and that's where I found this church. So I've been a pastor for three years, loving exactly where God has me.
Well, thank you. You and Pastor Fletcher doing a great job with serving the citizens of Fayetteville. So thank you for joining us tonight, sir.
Absolutely, blessed to see you.
Thank you. At this time, we will, we have a very special guest on the dais with us. We will, I'll defer to Mayor Protem so that you can introduce our special guest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I get the privilege of introducing Chloe Weller to you. She is a junior at Pine Forest High School and I met Chloe when she was one month old. So I'm feeling really old today. So she is a mighty Trojan and I just want to introduce Chloe.
Hi, good evening. I'm Chloe Weller from District One and a member of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. This month has been busy for FCYC with our many initiative and social justice issues we have been working with in our community. We know how important it is to help our community and that is why we are working on a new project. We are collecting yon to crochet for a cause that will be held next month. If anyone would like to donate, please contact us at asksyc.com. Our Mental Health Committee has had a successful event on teen dating violence. February has been a month of teen dating violence. Members wore purple and orange in the support of the cause. Kindness Matters has again become a success in schools. Members have received great feedback, including photos and thank yous from students, teachers, and faculty that have been impacted. FCYC believes in our members. We learn and we never stop wanting to build a better world. Inspired by Mary McLeod Bethune. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Let's give her a round of applause for... Certainly, I'm inspired by where our future citizens are headed, so thank you for joining us. Speaking of which, I have some special gentlemen here. I had the privilege and obligation to spend a few moments with them tonight. Could members of the Boule as well as the Underpar, the youth mentoring program, could you all come forward? Dr. Dickerson and this fine young gentleman that you have with you?
Thank you, Mayor. We have the opportunity to present some great things of just about a couple of guys who are volunteers who just love to play golf. And essentially, everybody's familiar with social media. Well, we wanted to put together something called Social Action, okay? And one of the best places to do that, of course, is on the golf course. So a couple of us got together, volunteers along with some local businesses, Underpar, Coach Anthony from Southview that plays golf, Elvred Gatesfor, and the great people at Underpar. And four, and actually five gentlemen, but of course, I can't cure the flu as a physician, so he's actually under the weather. But we have four local gentlemen who during Black History Month got a chance to have a three-fold, five-week engagement where we put a club in their hands indoors because it's very cold outside during February. We got a chance to then after a golf lesson to actually have a time where we sat down and dined and learned table manners and etiquette and most importantly, Black history and Black golf history. And then after that, and of course, my pastor from Manor will help us out, we then brought the word to them by serving and partnering with Family Fellowship Worship Center where essentially they got to round out their Sunday. Afterwards, we have also other partnerships. We have ICANN Clothing, which stands for I Can Do Everything Through Christ, Kelsey Stand Up, who's going, who has helped us and will continue to help us outfit him. And then, of course, one of my deacons from Family Fellowship Worship Center. So we wanted to once again thank the support that the mayor and the rest of the Fayetteville community because we're going to ask for all of your, when you're cleaning out for spring, all your golf stuff, all your shoes, all your equipment. We have a basically facility that will house them. And of course, this is our first foursome and there will hopefully be many more to show you as well. So thank you very much for allowing us to be a part and to show once again what we can do by just a little social action.
Yeah, and thank you. And Dr. Dickson was very, very modest, but the Underpar Company, a local company, was very generous with opening up their doors and co-mentoring as we look to make sure that we put positive role models in front of our, our youth. Underpar certainly is to be commended, the ownership of Underpar for what they've done in this program. And I had an opportunity to come out, spend a few moments with these guys who are very positive guys and very impressive. And I wanted to make sure that the city saw what we were doing for our young people. And so I invited them to tonight's show. So thank you for coming.
Thank you. And Ms. Jensen, we got two Trojans on this one too.
Northside kids.
We'll ask about those golf scores later, so we'll give them a few months.
We're working GPA's.
All right. Um, all right. At this time, we will ask that Mr. Phil Harris, Executive Director for American Red Cross and his team, if you would meet me at the podium?
Whereas the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter was established on April 26, 1917 in response to call from President Woodrow Wilson after the start of World War I to assist and comfort communities stricken by disasters large and small and to help able-bodied and disabled veterans and civilians overseas. And whereas the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter provides services to local community personnel and their families, including 24/7 emergency messaging, assisting military members and their families through pre-deployment and post-deployment briefings and seminars. And whereas the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter continues to partner with the city and county government and civic agencies to help ensure our communities are more ready and resistant in face of our future disasters. And whereas each year, the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapters provide shelter, clothing, food, and counsel to hundreds of area families who experience a home fire or other disasters such as tornadoes and floods, as well as plays a vital role in relief operations by deploying volunteers to rebuild communities hit by disaster and providing critical support and resources at home across the nation. And whereas each year, the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter trains thousands of local citizens to lead a safer and healthier lives through life-saving skills from swimming and lifeguarding to first aid, CPR, AED. And whereas each year, the American Red Cross Sand Hills Chapter helps to collect tests, distribute thousands of life-saving units of blood and blood products. And whereas our city's leadership relies upon our citizens who are motivated to act to our common humanity. This month, let us come together and celebrate Fayetteville's spirit of generosity and dedicated individuals and organizations who keep this spirit alive. Now, therefore, I'm Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby honorably proclaim March in the year 2020 to be American Red Cross Month in the all-American city of Fayetteville, and I urge all citizens to join me in this observance. In witness thereof, I hereon set my hand and cause of the great seal of Fayetteville to be affixed this sixth day of January 2020.
Thank you so much. I know that's a mouthful and I'm sorry that you had to read that. I know you have a busy schedule, but I'm here in front of you to say thank you. Thank you for our community, thank you for your support. People say, what are you going to do in March? It's Red Cross Month. We're going to do the same thing we always have since 1917. A hundred people met on Maiden Lane and said, we want our community to be safer and better. And we're still doing that today. And we're doing the volunteers. So our motto is prepare, respond, and recover, and we're doing just that. We train to get ready. We train people in the community with CPR. We're teaching hands-only CPR. You don't need a certificate to save a life. We're teaching Scrubby Bear. He teaches the benefits of hand washing. Now it's flu season and we want people to be prepared for that. And we respond. We help people after a fire. And we had five fires in Cumberland County last week. And that's a devastating event as big as a hurricane. And we recover. We help them with financial assistance and we do that each and every day 24/7. We install smoke alarms. Councilmember Dawkins kicked us off last year. We installed over 1,000 alarms with that kickoff. And I think the fire chief has said that we had no fatalities in Fayetteville last year. And I hope to say that we maybe had a little part of that. But it's all based on volunteers. We've got a strong volunteer force and we need our community to come together and help us. So thank you for recognizing us in March, but thank you for your recognition and help throughout the year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I will defer to Councilmember Waddell for an axeman, Unique Webster, and True to Yourself Committee. If you could please come to the podium, meet Councilmember Ingram.
Whereas the city of Fayetteville is proud of each and every one of its distinguished nonprofit organizations and the achievements of Unique Webster and the True to Yourself Committee of the Arts Council of Fayetteville, Cumberland County, certainly merit recognition. And whereas in this year, 2020, the Arts Council put together an impressive and vibrant Black History Month program series, including Be True to Yourself, a Black History Month talk series with Piedmont Natural Gas. And whereas, the experience of the series focused on African-American power movers who have made great imprints behind the scenes and in film and entertainment industries. And whereas, this talk provided the community with an informed perspective on topics regarding adversity, self-identity, and longevity in the entertainment industry as an African-American. And whereas, the event aimed and succeeded in reflecting the diversity in the arts and the impact of cultural community through the power of storytelling and the sharing of knowledge and wisdom. And whereas, this program offered a truly engaging and exceptional experience for the citizens and community as a whole, and it deserves acknowledgement and praise. Now, therefore, I'm Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the City Council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the 24th of February in the year 2020, in honor of Unique Webster and the True to Yourself Committee with the Arts Council for your outstanding work on this year's Black History Month programming. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 24th day of February 2020.
Good evening.
Attorney?
On behalf of the Arts Council and the True to Yourself Committee, I would like to thank the City Council for recognizing our event. And I would just like to say that Unique has done a fantastic job with True to Yourself through the years. I'm extremely proud of this committee and what we've been able to do. We started our event on February the 1st, which was the first day of Black History Month. As a people, I think that it's important that we understand who we are, where we come from, and the direction in which we're heading. And I think I addressed the audience that night and I said that it's not just up to pastors, it's not up to politicians, it's not up to attorneys, doctors, it's up to everyone to take part in this process. We have to move forward together, united. It's important that everyone understands that. Everyone plays a very important piece in the movement of progression for our people. Thank you again.
Thank you. Ma'am.
And I just want to say, this committee, as I'm a member of the committee, we work hard and we raise all of the funding for outside sources for this committee to present True to Yourself. And I don't know if you attended the last one, but to be a part of such amazing event and have it bring in so much talent is something Fayetteville should truly be proud of. And we are already in discussions about who we're bringing in next year and for it to be bigger. And so we thank the city of Fayetteville for honoring this and thank the committee for being here tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we get down to business, I think there's something important that I'd like to point out and make sure that the listening audience and those joining us by TV are tracking. At the end of each one of these proclamations tonight, it said, "On behalf of the 208,000 citizens." That number was from the last census trap. 2020 is a census year. We had a meeting. We need to make sure that every person is counted. It was estimated that for every person that is not counted or overlooked in this community, it costs us about $2,000 per year. And they do this every 10 years. So roughly, everyone that we miss in the count, that's roughly $20,000 that will not come into this community in federal and state resources, as well as congressional representation. So please, make sure that you put the word out. If you see the census folks in your neighborhood, make sure that they count everyone in your house. Make sure that you call all of your family, friends, and everyone in your circle because it really equates to dollars that come into this community for representation. And so they are also looking for people who will help with the process and they are paying $17 an hour. So if you have anyone who needs work on a part-time or seasonal basis, the Census Bureau is an excellent way to do it and it brings the resources into the community. So please, make sure that we're tracking that. Mayor Protem, you have something to add?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to kind of piggyback off what you had said. At our city-county liaison meeting, we had the census workers there. And if I am not mistaken, that we miscounted at our last census count that we, it was the tune of $240 million if it was that...
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years that our county had lost because we did not get everybody counted. It is very, very important. We figured out that we did not count 25,000 children. And that is costing our county and our city a lot of services that we need. So please take it seriously and please get out and tell your neighbors and your friends. Thank you.
All right. All right, council, it's time to get down to business. At this time, we will have, if I can find my agenda. All right. Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda. We have a motion by Councilmember Wright to approve. It's a second by Councilmember Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Ingram? Thank you. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda. As indicated upstairs, whoever makes the motion, Councilmember here, please remember item 6.03 with your motion to pull that.
Okay, I was going to let, okay. Yes, sir. Mayor, I would like to pull item 6.03 and 6.016 and 17, please.
And it was, Councilmember Waddell, did that cover your interest?
I was going to let her do it.
Did we pull item 6.018? I'd also like to pull item 6.018.
So we'll need a, Madam Attorney, I was going to state, we'll need a motion that will approve this with the exclusion of those items, I think. Madam Attorney, was that the light you were showing me?
I apologize, Mayor. Also, it was 6.013 regarding the...
Relocation.
Construction of Area 25.
Okay. All right, council, so the motion should look like, should look as follows.
And I also have 6.04 as well as 6.013.
Okay. All right. All right. So to restate the motion that I thought I heard Councilmember here say, it was to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.03, 6.017, 6.018, 6.04, and to relocate item 6.013 to 8.05.
And 6.116 and 17 concerning the PWC.
Well, I got 16 already.
You got that? Okay, I didn't hear you, sir.
Okay. So you would like 16 as well?
And 17. Yeah, because they're all the same. They're all the same. I'm going to ask the same question.
All right. So we'll get you to restate this complicated motion. So the items that would like to, we would ask that you would exclude or include in your motion is 6.03...
Yes, sir.
6.04...
Yes, sir.
6.013...
Yes.
6.016...
Mm-hmm.
6.017...
Yes.
And 6.018.
I was doing...
Okay. So there's a motion by Councilmember here. Can I get a, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Wright to approve with those exclusions that were stated. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.03, that is the adoption of the Capitol Project Budget Ordinance Amendment for the Hay Street Garage Project. I know we had some discussion about this. There was an additional 186,000. City had an interest earned that we had asked that would stay in our coffers, but now there's a request by staff to move this to the project. And I had a couple of questions on that, Deputy City Manager, so if you would like to give us just a little preliminary and I'll ask my questions as a follow-up.
Sir, I think you've stated it quite well. We have about $1.189,000 in interest that's been earned over the project. About 3,000 of that needs to go to bond proceeds payments. The rest of it is available for allocation. We're asking to de-allocate the project to cover some of the finishing items to actually open up the garage. Things like signage, pay kiosk, some pavement adjacent to the project to finish it up and get it open for the public.
All right. So the question that I had and the reason I asked you to just kind of give a little more detail on that, we had $15,000 that was in the original contract that was allowed for signage. You're requesting an additional 20. For parking controls, we had $85,000 for equipment. For parking equipment, you're asking for an additional $51,000. And for paving and sidewalk, site work that was included in the original agreement included striping, but you're asking for an additional $70,000. So I was just trying to reconcile the additional ask of the staff.
Right. So the signage that was included in Kaufman &amp; Lind, that's the construction company that was contracted to construct this site, was for interior code signage, things like exit signs, signs for stairs, directional signs inside the project. The $20,000 that's being requested tonight is for exterior signage, that's basically signs that say "public parking" and direct people to the public parking so they know where to go to use that, simply to, similar to what we have over at the Franklin Street Deck where we have a marquee that identifies the parking location. As far as the parking equipment, that $85,000 was expended by Kaufman &amp; Lind to put in the parking equipment. And if you go over there today, you'll see a little sign that says "full." You'll see the gate that goes up and down. That's the equipment that was purchased with that allocation. We're asking for additional allocation for a pay kiosk. The pay system was not identified at the time we designed. That pay system was actually specified just recently with the bringing on of Republic as our paid parking consultant throughout the city. So that is not something that was included in additional, in the original contract. The paving that we're talking about is actually to pave the alleyway between this project, Segra Stadium, and Amtrak, that area that has been dirt for some... Segra Stadium, and Amtrak, that area that has been, uh, dirt for some time. This would allow us to actually get over there and pave that. The, uh, cost that you identified in the contract for lining was for lining the parking spaces throughout the deck, and that has been done.
All right, that handles it for me. So, council, did you have any other, uh, questions on item six point zero three? All right, if not, uh, need a motion to, uh, approve six point zero three?
Motion to approve, sir.
Second. All right, is, is a motion by Councilmember here, is a second by Councilmember Dawkins? Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Banks? Okay, thank. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Thank you, sir. Uh, item six point zero four, uh, Councilmember Banks?
Yes, I pulled that because I wanted to get, um, can you hear me? Okay, further discussion on as far as, um, I know once, once, once I read it, it said we're trying to move two hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the general funding to capital funding. And I know originally, we received a grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I'm wondering where, um, do we have like a, a printout or something showing where those funds are going towards?
Well, actually, we do have a, a broader discussion of this project in the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan that was provided to council last Wednesday. Uh, tonight, we're really focusing on the next phase of the project. I've got on your screens the design for this project, and as you look over there now, uh, this, of course, does not currently exist on the field, on, on the ground. Uh, the area that heads toward the Ray Avenue roundabout has been, uh, mostly done, but the rest of the project has been, uh, delayed due to the complexity of the project, and some of the other delays. As you may know, the, uh, Segra Stadium finished just before opening day. It was actually supposed to be finished, uh, a couple of months before opening day, and so we would be able to get in there and do most of the work on the plaza. That did not happen. We also ran into a lot of new things as we started this project. Anytime you open up old ground, you find things you didn't expect, and this project was, uh, no different than that. This is what we're hope to be looking at when this is all done. Uh, you can see, if you look over there now, it doesn't look like this. In fact, there's a big hump as you come off of Hay Street. That hump goes over a, uh, a, a electrical junction box and a oil tank that we found under the ground. And so those are two things that need to be relocated in order to, uh, achieve this original plan and make the project, uh, safer. Uh, looking at this real quick, you can see in the yellow on this plan, this is what we expected to find as utilities, the pink is what we actually found in utilities. Uh, we had, so we had a lot more work that had to be done. So what we're looking at now is basically breaking this project up in additional phases to complete it. We have to complete it around the construction that continues to go on over there, and around the baseball season and other activities. So we expect to complete this over the next, uh, three years. We're asking for this funding to get us moving right now, so we can get some things in, especially in this yellow area, Phase One A, uh, before the baseball, baseball season opens. And one of the key things we're looking to get in is actual lighting. Uh, as you may recall, last year during the season, of course, the, the night games can get pretty dark, and this area doesn't currently have lighting, so we hope to get lighting in there to make it more welcoming and safe.
All right. Yeah, oh, yeah, there you have it.
Okay, I'm sorry, one more question. So in the near future, is the possibility that we're going to need more? You're going to request additional funding for this project, or this is-
The CIP does include funding in the next couple of years to continue this project.
All right, Councilmember Dawkins?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to make a motion, if it pleases the council. Um, many folks are aware, this, this is the Hurley Plaza piece, and then across the street is a, another great, uh, gentleman that was honored, um, who, um, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Hurley, and later Mayor Hurley, would pick up Councilmember Dawkins and take him to the city council meeting, uh, while, when I was growing up. So gives me a great pleasure, uh, to ask the council to consider to adopt the Budget Ordinance Amendments twenty twenty-eight and Capital Project Ordinance Amendment twenty twenty dash thirty-five as presented.
Thank you. There's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, there's a second by Councilmember Wright. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item six point zero one three, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. Oh, that was just a relocation, okay. All right, uh, item six point zero one seven, uh, is Councilmember Wright?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, my questions were answered by P W C prior to the meeting, but we would like them to come forth. Uh, there's a couple of questions, I think that, um, Councilman, uh, here had questions, uh, as well, but we can get those clarified at this time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman, have you had some questions about these two?
Right. What, what my concern was, as I looked through the, uh, the bid section, I, I didn't see any local, uh, participation. And what my question was, will the local participation be a part of the, uh, the subcontractor part, or is there any local participation at all in the, in, really in items, uh, fourteen, uh, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen?
Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen are all associated with the Bordeaux substation?
Yes, sir.
So, um, all three of the, the bids for, for the equipment that you see in front of you, or for equipment that is, was, was selected, was bid and won by companies that are remote from Fayetteville, because they make integrated systems. We advertised these bids to all of the normal local and SBDE contractors, subcontractors that, that do this, and there were none of them that came forward, and none of them that really do the work that's in subcontractor in building these things. So we just recently, our commission's going to get this week, the, the recommendation for the bid to build the substation, to build that, um, that this, that this goes into, and that contract, right now, the, the winner, the low bidder, is a local company, and they have local companies and local SBDEs that will be involved in the building of it. So it's, and they, these are specialized equipment that only build a few places in the country, and so the building of them is very difficult to have local bidders, because you don't have people here that do that kind of work. But the actual putting them together to build the substation is going to be done by local contractors with SBDE participation.
Right, and those, those initials, just for those that are listening, uh, give us what that means.
As far as the, the installation?
No, the, the, um, it's, what is it, S B?
Okay, yes, small business-
Small business.
Disadvantaged enterprise, I think it stands for, yes. So it's aimed, it, it's aimed at traditional businesses that have been disadvantaged over the years, as well as local, and local businesses, we do both of them, and we have an-
A local and minority.
Right, and minority. So we do an outreach, every project that we bid, we do an outreach to all of those local businesses that are in that situation, so that they can come to pre-bid meetings and meet people who are likely to be the general contractors, and look for subcontracting opportunities. So we do that. In these specific situations, there wasn't anything that local companies did that could be subcontracted here, but the actual putting the components together will be done by a local company.
Thank you, sir. We are watching. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Brown, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
A few weeks ago, we talked about the fact that, uh, many members on the council wanted the city acceleration of sewer installation out west. You told me that you had, it was too expensive to use contractors from out of the area, you remember, because I kind of recommended that you look nationally? But in this case, you used a contractor from out of the area because he did the work. He specialized in the work, he responded to the bid, so when does P W C and how did they decide, when you look abroad, for contractors?
We always look for national and regional contractors. I think the difference between these specific bids and the bids of construction for the Phase Five is the nature of the work. Okay, in these bids, what you're, what you're talking about doing is building some specific structures that can be, be built remotely and shipped, okay? So they can be done anywhere in the country and shipped. When you're looking at a construction project, so if I, my headquarters are in Los Angeles, California, and I'm going to do a construction project, and I'm going to have to hire people in Fayetteville, do I have a knowledge of the Fayetteville workforce and people that I can hire to do that? And can I do that? And I'm not going to bring people in from Los Angeles to do that work. So the nature of something that's labor-intensive, like the Phase Five construction, doesn't lend itself to national contractors to do the work. Something that's very specialized and done in a highly specialized area lends itself to national companies being able to do the work, and then local companies building it, which is what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Uh, yes, why, why are you, uh, this is not pertaining to, um, those contracts, but you had a ton of presentation last week about the meeting times for P W C when, when it came to the sewer, um, the sewer installation. When would those meetings be for the residents? Because I've had some calls, you had three meetings, different meetings, can you explain that right quick?
Sure, so, so, uh, at, at any one time, we have, we have projects in three different stages, okay? We have a projects in design, so when projects are in design, we don't hold any citizen meetings, because there's nothing to talk to them about, okay? So, um, when the project is bid, and today, we have, we had in consent, we had an item for you to tell us to go ahead and proceed with bid for Area thirty-two, and we moved an item for Area twenty-five that's after the public hearing tonight, we're asking you permission to go and bid. When we bid those projects, once we have the contractor who's going to do the work, then the first meeting we have is a pre-construction meeting. So areas, as you're moving through, as we have a contractor who's picked, and now we can talk to you about, where's the contractor going to set his equipment up, what's it going to look like, what are we going to do to work with you so you can get access in and out of the neighborhoods? We make sure that emergency vehicles can get in and out of those things, and so we walk you through everything that's going to happen during the construction phase. And I think we all know, you all know, it's a mess, and we do everything we can to make it as convenient for the citizens as we can, but it's, it's a messy project going into existing neighborhoods and tearing things up and putting them back together. So that's the first meeting. So every project has that when we get to that point. So Area twenty-five, which we're going to have a public hearing tonight about, and Area thirty-two, we're asking you tonight to give us permission to go ahead and bid those projects, and that will be followed by a pre-construction meeting, okay? The next one, okay, is when, when the area is ready, when it's completely constructed, and it's ready for the citizens to connect, okay? So Area twenty-one was recently, in the last couple of months, completed, and Area twenty-one, we've held the connection meeting. At that meeting, we invite the citizens in, we talk to them about their choices about connection, how that works. We have somebody from the Plumbers Association talk about how you go about selecting a plumber to do that. We have people from the city inspection staff there to talk about if you're able to do the work yourself, how you have to do pool permits and everything, and answer questions about that. So we do all of that, okay? And then, when we get to the point where we're, um, which we are with Area twenty-one, once the council confirms the assessment, so we're going to come to you in the next month or so, Area twenty-one, which is done, has been, had the connection meeting, is now ready to come to the council to ask for you to confirm the assessment role, we're going to give that to you in March, and probably in April or May, we'll be, you'll be asked to confirm it. Once you confirm the assessment role, so we know exactly what the assessments are, then we hold an assessment meeting with the citizens, and we bring them in, and we talk to them, and we explain to them their options for paying the assessment, okay, and all the different things, and we answer all those questions. Throughout all of the meetings, even though the first meeting is a focus on pre-construction, the second meeting's a focus on connection, and the third meeting's a focus on assessment, we answer questions in all three of those areas. So we, we do the best we can to answer those questions.
Got you. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Uh, all right, uh, so, council, we will, I think we addressed, uh, item six point zero one six and one seven, so entertain a motion against Councilmember here, you pulled those items?
Yes, sir.
Or Councilmember Wright?
No more questions, sir? Then I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve, uh, item six point zero one six and six point zero one seven.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember here, there's a second by Councilmember Ingram, I think. Uh, any discussion, clear that, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous, motion carries. Uh, item six point zero one eight, uh, Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you. I, I looked over the federal action plan that our lobbyist is supposed to be working on for us. And one of the things that I noticed was, um, absent was for our lobbyist to seek federal assistance for infrastructure repair, installation, and maintenance. So if we can just be certain to include that in that action plan for the lobbyist, um, that is, that is the one note of correction or addition that I'd like to make for that action plan. I think that when we were speaking also in the dinner meeting, it came up that we wanted to be certain that the lobbyist also was focused on seeking additional funding or assistance at the federal level for any of the things that came up when we had our strategic planning that made it on to our, our actual, actual list of targets for action. So, um, I would like to just make sure that those are included, and, and that's really all that I have on that.
Yes, ma'am, we'll make sure that happens. Thank you.
And I did have a question, uh, Assistant City Manager. So, um, in this plan, I know it's kind of just an overview of what their marching orders are, I'm sure there's, uh, more detailed contract that kind of represents what, what the expectations are with them. What is this, this document, how does it relate to the agreement? Because we've already engaged their services, correct?
Yes, sir, we engaged, you all approved us, I think it was September of last year, to work with them. We'll take this document actually to, um, you know, see when we go to DC, that, those, that's one of the things that they'll be doing, but we can definitely update this document, and any other things that you all want to add, we can add, ask them to kind of, uh, work with us on it.
Because I know we've had several discussions with them about making sure that they look for all federal resources, opportunity zones, or whatever it is that fits into the city's plans, that we bring all money back to Fayetteville that we can, right?
Absolutely. We meet with them via phone call about every couple of weeks, so as you all direct, uh, the manager and myself, we can certainly add, or, you know, just do whatever we're directed to do.
Okay, all right. Uh, Councilmember Waddell, would you like to make that motion?
Absolutely. I make a motion that we approve item six point zero one eight with the inclusion, the inclusions that have been mentioned, um, and agreed upon by the council.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell, there's a second by Councilmember Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Oh, Ken, that was Ken? No, it was, all right. All right, got my names mixed up, I'm sorry. So Councilmember Kenston was the second, Madam Clerk. All right, but, the motion carried? All right. All right. Item seven point zero one, uh, staff report, Fayetteville Police Department Chief, how are you?
I'm well, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, first of all, I want to, it goes without saying, I want to say, appreciate also the opportunity to present on a quarterly basis. Um, it's a lot of information, a lot of things that we do as a police department to stay focused on the main goal of keeping our community a safe, um, a secure community, but, um, in every opportunity that we have to share what we're doing and how we have those strategies in place empowers you, as, as we want to empower the community to join in this effort. So, starting off, even though this is the, the fourth quarter report, it culminates, actually, to pretty much the year in review. So what you're going to see is from January through December, the numbers from last year. And what I can say is, um, proudly, happily, we are not only a safe and secure community, but this is the third year in a row that you will see, um, numbers presented, that we continuously go against our own numbers, which is very, very difficult to do. Um, we're competing against ourselves, we're, we're trying to figure out new strategies in order to, um, how else can we expand on that? And we, we realize it's a, it's a serious partnerships that we have with the community. So, um, as I said, I'm going to go over the strategies, statistics, community engagement, and our fighting strategies. It's going to be the similar, um, PowerPoint that you've seen in the past, but know that for, um, twenty twenty, we'll probably evolve a little bit since, um, you all are becoming aware. Also, with your package in front of you, you will have, as I go over the numbers, you'll have the yellow sheet that looks like this, um, so you can reference it, different, different categories, and you'll also have a definition sheet, just in case you need to reference it. So our first category, we're going to go over, um, our neighbor's offense, person's offense compared, um, this is January through December, um, data. We had one extra homicide that occurred, and as you look at the PowerPoint, plus is the negative, that's an increase. Green is a positive, that means it's a decrease for that category. Um, as you can see, rapes have decreased, aggravated assault, we've talked about that before, I added to this PowerPoint all other crimes, because that, that affects our numbers, all other persons' crimes. And if you go to your sheet, you'll see, what, what exactly is that? So all other persons' crimes will be everything outside of aggravated assault, so it'll be things like simple assault, um, it'll be things like, uh, communicating threats and intimidation. So those numbers affect our overall person's crime, but even with that, we had a, a decrease of nine percent for the whole year. But even with that, we had a decrease of 9% for the whole year. Last time, we drilled down on what motivates those aggravated assault numbers, misdemeanors or felonies, and you can see the percentage of decrease, or, I'm sorry, the percentage of increase overall. I shared last time, when we saw that in 2018, that was a direct reflect of domestic violence, how that increased from 2018, that we had seven of our 23 homicides were reflective, domestic violence reflective. So I established a domestic violence unit to drill down and see what else can we do to support the victims? How else can we do to investigate it? And total for 2019, we had 24 homicide, and only one was domestic violence related. So that's a, we think that's a huge impact. I wanted to share also, when we talk about homicides, you saw just the number 23, 24, what do we do about the other deaths that are occurring in our community? That's important. You need to understand that our homicide unit does many more things. They actually are the lead investigators for any type of suspicious death, any type of death that doesn't seem where someone's on hospice, as well as they respond to overdoses, suicide, just to make sure the preliminary investigation is showing that everything is consistent until we get the ME report. So, and even natural deaths or accidental deaths. So with all of that, that's an overall, other death investigations that our homicide unit is always investigating. So we talked about the overdose. So in 2015, the Fayetteville Police Department, we partnered with North Carolina Harm Reduction to figure out, you know, our goal is keeping the community safe. That involves what's going on with these opioid issue. So in that year, you'll see the chart that shows each year how many Narcan doses were administered by police officers. So with that, from 2015 to 2019, we had a total of 244 Narcan administered. What that also shows is only two people who were administered Narcan actually resulted in a death. So everyone else, they were able to recover and reverse the actions of the opioid that they had taken in their system. We go into the property crimes now. So the property crimes, you'll see our numbers. Remember, I have the burglaries, we made a big impact on burglaries. Larceny is a large number. If you start looking at 4,000 incidents, that's a hard number to bring down, but that number is huge when we can have impact with things like our 9pm routine, where we educate the community that they play a role in thefts that occur in their community. And if you look at the numbers, it is broken down in the larceny. That includes things like shoplifting, blackmail, and extortions. Those are numbers. So even with shoplifting, we try to make impact as a police department, and we go talk to the businesses, or we talk to the major businesses, say, what can you do to try to prevent shoplifting in your stores, because that affects our community. All other property crimes, you can look on the yellow sheet legend that I gave you, but overall, we had less than, we had a decrease, it was less than 1%, but the fact that it was a decrease is definitely a positive impact. Our clearance rate report, we're getting close to where we're going to close it out for the year. We have to submit something to the FBI to make it consistent. So nationally, everything right now is on track to be above the national standard. It's a little bit lower than what we did last year. It is everything except for motor vehicle theft, we've seen an increase. So remember, the clearance rate shows when we solve a crime, for example, it's either going to be cleared by arrest or exceptionally clear. Cleared by arrest means that someone is actually processed through jail. We can have a warrant on someone, know where they are, be in another jail, but until we process them through our system, we can't clear it with an arrest. We just have to wait till we can take them through our system. An exceptionally clear can be something like someone who dies. So that can be cleared, but it's a different situation until we run them through our system to show that we made an arrest on that situation. We also have issues where we don't have cooperation with the person who might not want to help us solve the crime, so we essentially cannot clear that. We have done all the investigative work on it, and we can't clear it because we know that they have some relationship to the person, and don't want to disclose enough evidence to go through prosecution or make an arrest. So another thing that we track is our fatalities, very important, very high on our issues because we want to decrease that. So we look at different things to see what can we work at. If there's a street in our community, do we need more lighting? Do we need more traffic devices? Even specifically last year, if you see this chart, what's the difference? Our pedestrian fatalities that occurred last year. That's huge to go from two to seven. Analyzing just the seven alone, four of the seven were pedestrians, of the pedestrians, the pedestrians were at fault. They were either running in the roadway, or they were not abiding by traffic guidelines or rules. And four of the pedestrian fatalities occurred in the daylight. So you would think that it's nighttime, it's a street that's dark, we can prevent it in some manner, but that didn't help as well. A lot of times, we are seeing speeding is, as you can see, is a major factor in a lot of these fatalities. So that's, that one, ask more questions later for that one. I provide you just with my narcotics units. When they seize the drugs off the streets, these numbers do not reflect the rest of patrol or any other investigative unit. So this is the progress of just the narcotics unit, of what they're doing, what type of drugs they're taking off the street, and what type of weapons and arrests that they're making specifically. This also notes that we have noted and paid attention that the new thing that's coming out in our community is actually meth is recycling in our community. So we're working on thinking of preventive measures to get that information out, just to get someone hooked on meth. They're selling it right now at a very, very low cost, just so someone can deviate from any other drug addiction. So we've seen that going through our community right now. Talked about our communication center and our 911 center, looking at response time. So for 2019, we had 194,056 total calls for service that came into the 911 center. Compared to that, I put a note of what that number was in 2018. With that, we are still below the response time for Priority One and Priority Two calls for the nation, and below what we expected to do for ourselves, the goals that we set for ourselves as well. I shared with you what we do in our internal affairs unit. We, of course, investigate any use of force incident. We do an internal, not internal, we do a review to see, did we follow all the guidelines and all the policies that we have for our use of force. Department investigations, those are investigations that are initiated by a supervisor within the department, and the citizen complaint are the complaints that come from outside in the community and everything that we take in. And as a reminder, we take all complaints, anonymous emails, phone calls, don't have to know who it is, we take them in any route, so that's not restrictive whatsoever. Staffing, that's a key thing. So keep in mind, this is a point in time from December 31st. That was our sworn actual. We had just hired, our January academy started, and we hired a lot of laterals, non-sworn, that number is reflective, the biggest impact is our communication center. And so, remember, we spent a lot of time trying to think of ideas of recruiting. So in the last quarter, the fourth quarter alone, we hired 11 lateral officers to try to offset that number, and it still showed at that time, we were still six under. So we're definitely on doing many things, many incentives to try to bring on Blet officers as well as lateral officers. Our other community fighting engagement, Crime Stoppers. If you're not familiar with Crime Stoppers, this is a very, very good tool that we use in our community in order to gain tips, anonymous tips, that help us solve our crimes. This is part of the partnership that we have with the community. Look at the intake at the call center. So for example, the difference of the call center intake versus the overall number. Most of the calls come into the police department, and our public information officers take those tips in. When we're not at work, we have a call center take those calls in for our tips. So we still take a profound amount of tips that receive come in from the call center, but we still take them in when we are working. And the results of that, so the payouts, we have paid out 20, over $20,000 in rewards, anonymous tips. We've recovered and seized over $370,000 worth of property, cash seized, drug seized, and 37 firearms taken off the streets because of Crime Stoppers and the success of that Want to give a highlight of example of using multiple things besides the community. Last quarter, we had a major trend going on in our community near the Fort Bragg corridor that covered from Savoy Heights. And in the middle of the night, we were just getting hit up, mostly cars left unsecure. We had all different strategies. We changed our schedules, we had our drones up, we were trying to get information, we were sharing information from our, the app. It was, we were a long, long task of trying to figure out clues. We finally got clues with photographs of the individual based off of the neighbor, the, what's the, the door, thank you, the Ring app, and connecting those in those time periods. We were out there continuously. It resulted in the warrant and arrests, talking with probation and parole of these two individuals who lived very closely, and we were able to find enough of the property and evidence to associate with 68 of the thefts that occurred out of 103. So when we share about, when we start focusing on most wanted, the individuals doing the same things over and over again, that's another reason in a success story, or why we target that. Another thing we did in the fourth quarter was, you know, it's the holidays, so we make sure we increase our patrols around our business areas. So we have a dedicated extra patrols in all three districts and all three of the business areas, very successful, very preventive. We put a lot of information of preventive, a lot of PSAs regarding what the citizens need to do to prevent their thefts from their items or any type of stolen things in their property, in their homes and their cars. So our community affairs unit, this is their chart. This is, this chart talks about a point in time, now this is in December of '31. We did an audit to see where are we with all the community watch groups, what type do we have? We have the traditional one, that they meet quarterly, they meet monthly, they meet every other month. We have active HOAs, we have active business watch. So, and then we divide it into our district, so we can see what's that balance. So from this, what we also did was my crime information center supervisor start thinking of ideas of how we can share this information specifically with you and the public to say, where is my watch group? Where does it exist? I sent you an email in December for this next view. The next view shows, it's an app, you should be able to click on it later on. But when you click on it and you start maneuvering it, it divides all the community watch throughout the city, where it exists, what type it exists. You're able to hover over each of the icons on the left-hand side of that screen and see the address, the contact person, who's the representative, and that way, that'll help you and your constituents find out, what's the closest one to me, and where's a new one that exists? And it'll identify what types that they are. Last quarter, we did a lot of engagement for the holidays. We tried to identify what opportunities we can to get with the communities that, not just the children, but we realized there are a lot of part of the community that don't get to get out, so we focused on a lot of assisted living facilities. So these are photographs of the different locations that we had, Coco with a cop. And then we had other events like Coffee with a Cop under par, as you said, in November. We try to do a Coffee with a Cop event quarterly in the different districts to try to make sure we cover the city. And of course, we were in the Christmas, our annual Christmas parade, we participated. And as you know, we had the Powell Building ribbon cutting, so that was a major event for us and the city that was successful. So from the last, so from the last quarterly report, we had feedback sharing, what can we do about littering? And so we created a PSA, and I'm going to play that for you right now, of the PSA that we presented. It is coming.
Not only is this an eyesore to the community and a detriment to the environment, but it's also a criminal offense. I'm Sergeant Jeremy Glass in the Public Information Office, and I'm here to talk to you about littering and illegal dumping. Fines for this offense start out at $430, but it's also a Class III misdemeanor, which means you can be arrested. But thankfully, Fayetteville, we have some tips that will help you prevent littering. Scattered across the city are receptacles that come in all shapes and sizes that will gladly accept your trash, the trash can. That's right, Sergeant Glass. Another thing you can do is keep a small plastic bag in your car, so when you fill it up with trash, you can throw it away later. And when you're pumping gas, you can collect all that trash and throw it away right there next to the gas pump. And for larger, bulkier items, such as this old chair, don't just chuck it in the woods, put it down by the road, and call 4331 Fay, or a free Fay Fix-It app to schedule a bulky item pickup. So there's an easy way for you to report litter bugs. Just go to North Carolina DOT's website, fill out the form. All you need to know is when it happened, where it happened, what exactly was thrown out, and make sure you get a plate number. After you fill the form out, DOT will send an official letter to the registered owner of the vehicle saying that they were a litter bug. So these are just a few tips to keep Fayetteville beautiful, help out the environment, and to prevent you from getting in trouble. I'm Officer Strickland. As always, stay safe, and we are here if you need us.
All right. I like that. Yeah. So my community affairs unit and public information department does an awesome job. I give them some guidance, what we look, and they become innovative. As you'll see, I left in front of you, this is another thing we do, we give officers the 9pm routine card. That shows our partnership. What else are we going to be able to do to drive, continue to drive our, keep our community safe, drive our numbers lower? We can't do it by ourselves. It is the serious partnership that makes us successful as a city. It is reminding everyone just to lock their things up, because remember, those 103, majority of those 103 that was affecting in the Savoy Heights, Fort Bragg area, were unsecured vehicles. The other thing I gave is how to submit an anonymous tip. This is money, literally, it's different degrees that people can call in, I'm sorry, is it not attached to your, okay, so, different degrees. And last but not least, before I hand questions, we have an awards ceremony coming up. You know, I always do my best to make sure I invite you to, not on our graduations, but our awards ceremony, where we're taking, recognizing the officers, not the officers, our employees for the hard work they're doing, and the ones that exceed. They're working hard, but there are certain ones that do a little bit extra. So with that, I am ready for questions.
We do have a few questions for you, Madam Chief. So start with Councilmember Hare.
Thank you. Chief, my first, well, it's not my first question, but I would love for us to, at least myself, maybe my fellow councilmembers, to get a copy of that trash do not litter commercial, so that I can send that to various
Absolutely, sir.
...areas of my district.
Know some litter bugs?
I know some, and we're going to have to put trash cans on every street, because they don't listen. But once again, Chief, I've mentioned this periodically, well, often, whenever you come before us, it's our wreckage debris.
Yes, sir.
It just seems like that it's, whatever is supposed to be done, it's, Chief, it just, it doesn't work.
I understand, sir.
I see bumpers, I mean, even this week, and what can we do to reinforce those record, those recor companies that own call for that particular wreck? Look, guys, this is for what you're supposed to do, and not sweep it, well, for one thing, they don't pick it up, but then they may sweep it to the curb and leave it. And I've seen bumpers, broken tires. So we really, this is really a major issue throughout the city, and I would love to see if we can do something to kind of reinforce that with the record companies, because they are the ones that are responsible, correct?
Yes, well, yes, sir. And I'll share the plan, because we've heard, we heard you, we've heard, seen the emails. So this is our plan right now that we have, until we reach our March 2nd, we have a meeting with the wrecker board on March 2nd. So before, until we get to that meeting with them, even though they know that they're supposed to be doing that, we have all of the officers a procedure of practice. We're going to not only record it, but we have some checkoff list that we're going to enter into our CAT system, that we have verified they cleaned up the record, which means, according to the rules, pick it up and take it away. I have to remind you, though, not every accident is handled by the police department who calls the rotation wrecker. When we see something like that, so in other words, people may have an accident, leave it, throw it away, and drive off. We can't hold those incidents accountable, but definitely the ones, when we show up, we're going to stand by and make sure we record the scene and check it off our list that they have cleared the scene. We're going to have a meeting with the wrecker board on March 2nd, this is the next meeting scheduled date, and we've already told them, this is an issue that we're going to present to them, that we're going to hold them accountable.
And thank you, Chief. Thank you for your report, and please don't forget, I would love to get that commercial.
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Hare, I talked to the attorney about it. She said one thing that we may want to consider is passing an ordinance that addresses it, because right now, there is no city policy or ordinance that requires it, so.
You're saying there's no ordinance for our wrecker?
That covers the other wrecks you're talking about.
Right, so, so there's a process, as Chief said, that if, if the police calls the rotation, we can implement that, but there's no city policy that says that addresses that. So she's gonna gather some information for us.
Yeah, that's an easy fix. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. All right, Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Chief, and Police Department. So there's kind of three different categories I want to try to touch on. Traffic fatalities and distracted driving. I'm hearing in the community that a lot of the traffic fatalities or crashes, car crashes that lead to traffic fatalities are due to construction of medians and how we are, not we, but how the intersections are starting to be built or constructed. So the construction that is taking place in this age are probably some of the leading. Can you confirm if that's maybe the case? I certainly do believe that distracted driving may be one of the things. But as far as the construction that is being put in place from, from maybe the city NCDOT, but period, can you confirm or deny what from your terms and when you investigate, what is the leading cause to, you know, car crashes and fatalities?
So just like outside of the homicide unit, they take extensive work in order to study a homicide. The tra, my traffic unit does the same thing. They're the ones who respond. And if you saw the, the chart that you, that we referenced. So remember, everything that attributes to it, whether it be it's a pedestrian or motorcycle. So you could have multiple things attribute to an accident. Distracted may be one of the issues. But every case is isolated to, to be able to determine what contributed to this fatality. We have had fatalities that occur where someone was distracted. We've had twelve, as you can see, speeding played a role in that or was involved part of fatality. Without giving a summary analysis of the twenty-five, it's very difficult to say that's an absolute, it's all distracted driving because it actually is not. There is, I'll give you a, a simple example of, we just had a fatality yesterday. Very sad, motorcycle on, on Bunce Road with someone on the back going, preliminary shows going on over a hundred miles an hour. How, you cannot prevent someone, you cannot prevent that other than they know that's outside the realm for a motorcycle on that road. So it, it's very sad besides information sharing, besides education. So I cannot provide what you're saying is absolutely the median because you might have construction going on and someone's just not paying attention and look up and, and an incident happens. The four, the four fatalities involving a pedestrian. Someone's driving down the road, we don't know why someone's running it out of traffic. We can't, we can't predict that. We can't predict or prevent someone just stepping off the curb. You know, there was another fatality that happened in this quarter in which unfortunately it was someone who fell in the road because they had equilibrium issues. So it's very difficult to try to prevent those incidents. So I can't say it's distracted driving, I can't say it's an absolute that it's construction.
Thank you. And then my second part, which is touching on the community watch. So the, the case you described earlier, that in particular is one of the, kind of talks about one of the things we discuss in our community watches. And to see that information gather over time just by using the residents' cameras, I for, I for one was really impressed at how the Assistant Police Chief was able to pull that information in. We currently have two, I just did the math, two hundred and seventy community watch groups, which I feel is a really great number. Can you touch on?
Which, which, where'd you get that from?
The, the numbers I just added up.
Yeah, no, the.
So we're more.
No, the tot, well, the total is of, of those one thirty-five, a hundred and eight of those what?
Oh, okay. I, I counted all groups that, okay, I'm sorry.
Those are the subsection of what type of groups they are.
Okay, my apologies, what, what Chief said. So in terms of community watch groups and, and I just want the citizens to understand the importance of civility and doing our duty as citizens. I do understand because I, I grew up in a high poverty community and crime ridding. For example, communities like Elliot Circle, which are, is completely different today. Some citizens sometimes fear calling the police because they're feared that they're being watched by who is robbing them. So I, can you please touch on methods of getting in touch with police and making sure that citizens remain anonymous? Because I do want the citizens to feel that they are safe and being heard in their, in their own homes.
So the first thing they can start off by saying, if they call nine-one-one, is say, I want to remain anonymous. It's recorded and, and that's the first step. The other step I share is Crime Stoppers. Give a tip. We operate off of these tips all the time. And Crime Stoppers exists, it's a nonprofit, it exists. It's, it didn't start off in Fayetteville. It exists under the, the integrity of being able to remain anonymous so that it's more importantly to solve the crimes. So this is an also an avenue, definitely an avenue, to get leads into solving crime. Or they can, they can tell someone who can, they can send an email. But we operate off of many tips coming from many different areas. But the success of Crime Stoppers, the success of remaining anonymous until the community feels safe enough, if that's how they feel, to get involved and to get engaged because teaming up together and joining together empowers them. So that's important. We don't want anyone in fear in our community.
Thank you so much. And for, for those that are watching, can you say that, that number for them to call for those that are watching at home?
So Crime Stoppers is nine-one-zero-four-eight-three-TIPS. They messed me up on this card for what TIPS is referenced.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
All right, Councilmember Dawgs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief Hawkins. Cameras, you know, that's my thing. And I, I want to thank Council Lady Ingram for mentioning about cameras and using residents' cameras to help us solve crimes. I wanted to go to number eighteen of, of twenty-six on the PowerPoint and just have you clarify a point for me. And while you're doing that, Chief, I want to thank you for organizing the data in one page. I'm a one-page summary guy. Go right to the point, tell us the facts, and then we can make policy decisions. So thank you for doing this and look forward to more. But back to cameras again. I hope you're budgeting some money for additional cameras. I know you've done some connections with some of our neighborhoods, Buckhead and others. And I want to thank you for, for making that happen. But throughout the downtown and throughout our city. And I want folks to be able to link into our cameras so that we can solve many more crimes.
What's on eight, what's on eighteen?
All right, you say the major trend of a hundred and three vehicles that were vandalized, broken into, breaking and entering, left unsecured in the Fort Bragg corridor. Now, do you mean Fort Bragg Road corridor or do you mean Fort Bragg Boulevard corridor?
Boulevard corridor, Savoy Heights.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I wanted that to be clarified.
Yes, sir.
Right, because where we caught these guys was in District Five because they were creating, doing a crime, but they lived in over, in District Two. So therefore.
They, they were, they were moving from both of our districts, Central and, and Hamilton. So they were mobile, but they, they were, it was a hundred and three unsecured vehicles, yes.
Well, and the reason I mention that is I've gotten, I was averaging a call every couple of weeks by cars being vandalized in neighborhoods. All right, I wanted to mention that. I also want to thank our citizens for their cooperation in watching their neighborhoods. Not just community watches, but calling their councilmembers saying, hey, there's an issue over here. If you could check on it. And your team has been very willing to respond and keep an eye on things and doing it discreetly, which is so important. And I want our citizens to know that we want to keep them confidential. That is so crucial to solving these crimes and thank the folks that support Crime Stoppers. And Chief, also want to thank you for your focus on littering as a criminal offense. Fayetteville Beautiful, which was started many years ago and, and administered by my, the previous councilmember for District Five, Bobby Hurst. I want to thank him. And we're all focused on litter and making sure that folks know it's a crime. And, but I want people to respect their city and not litter. And because that's part of the problem is respect. Mr. Mayor, I think that's it.
All right, yeah. Thank, thank you, Chief. Quite a bit, yes. Thank you, Councilmember Dawgs. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you so much. Chief Hawkins, again, as, as has been said, thank you for this information. And to each one of your law enforcement officers, thank you for continuing to keep our city safer and for doing everything that they do to make sure that these numbers continue to go down. I just have one question, first to comment. Thanks for putting Swat a Litter Bug in there. That's a big deal, I really appreciate that. You said that our community is recycling meth back into the community.
Yes.
Now, forgive me if this sounds like an ignorant question, but I don't see that on the list. So is meth fentanyl or like what is, on this list, what is meth?
This was end of December.
Okay.
I was sharing information, what we're seeing recently. Yes, was coming now.
Is it replacing something? So like, is something?
We believe it is, we believe it's replacing heroin and maybe some marijuana, but we believe it is.
So that's why we could potentially see this number of heroin coming down so significantly?
Well, more importantly, I just share that for information.
Right.
And I'll share it to prepare for education of the community.
That was gonna be my next question. Is as a community, what are some of the things that we should be vigilant about when it comes to particularly some of these drug concerns? Because I know that, you know, often a person may be under the influence of a particular drug, which may cause danger for the people that they're around. But what are some things from law enforcement's perspective that the community should be very vigilant about?
So we're trying to prepare the most appropriate PSA that can cover a lot of different things. Meth is very dangerous because it's very, very quick and it's created in the kitchen. If you recall, maybe, maybe like eight years ago, meth was high and it's very, very dangerous and very volatile and it affects someone's body very quickly. So I'm trying to figure out a PSA that can cover not just meth, but the general aspect of things, to be able to educate the community, even if it's a video or information sharing on that aspect. So, because that is important. You need to know what to look for. Community needs to know what big risks they're gonna see happen very quickly. So I'm trying to create something for that one.
The last part of that question, I know when we talk about, like from, from previous documentaries that I've seen in news reports, when we talk about methamphetamines, one of the concerns for people in communities, like I remember a case where there was meth being made in a Walmart bathroom. And so one of the concerns for the community is, is there a meth lab in your, in your neighborhood? Because I think there may be some danger of like explosion or some things like that. So if we can make sure that we're just, since this is something that we're, you know, potentially maybe being inundated with, if we can just make sure that citizens know
Absolutely.
what to look for. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Wright?
It's a great presentation, Chief. I have a couple of questions for you. The first one would be along those lines. When you talk about meth, ice, and all of those opioids, help us to understand when you say the opioids, because this is a great slide that you, you put up with the two hundred and forty-four incidents and only two, after the use of the, the Narcan. Only two people overdosing possibly, I think, died out of two hundred and forty-four?
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's, that's great in saving lives. My question was, and, and when you're talking about the opioid and this, and this Narcan, are there other drugs where people OD that the Narcan can't help or it helps in any, in all opioid drug overdose?
You know what? You've extended past my knowledge. I'm gonna be very honest. And I'll look into it though.
Yeah, the reason I asked that.
Drugs that covers.
Right, because on the national level, you know, the opioid epidemic became a huge concern for the country because so, so many people were dying because of the opioid epidemic.
Let me check, I might have expert in room. Major? It's just opioids, see? Got one in room, right there.
So what, what could, and I know you sit on the President's Advisory Board. Is that what it's called?
It's the Law Enforcement Commission and Administration of Justice, sir.
Great, great. We, we're so proud to have you sitting on that board. Is that something you can take back on that level to say, is there anything we can do for other overdoses besides opioids is great and we're saving lives, but we're losing a lot of lives on the other side? And I know that's probably beyond, but I wanted to put that out there because that's a grave concern of the community. Lives are being saved, but then lives are being lost as well. So my next question will be, and I appreciate that, would be, can you explain to the public when it comes to violent crime? You showed some statistics, but how you calculate the percentages of violent crimes? And I know in your last, you know, presentation, you know, if there were nine people in the room and a bullet came through the room, then tho, those are nine violent crimes percentages. So help the citizens to understand, is that still the case? And the numbers may seem high, but in actuality, those, the events or the Violent Crime Act may not be as many as the people that's being involved. Can you explain that to us?
Yes, sir. When we transition to Uniform Crime Reporting to NiBRS, National Incident-Based Reporting System, it's, it, it transitions so that we are, have better tools to drill down on what type of crime. That's what you have here in that aspect. So when you look at like aggravated assault, it has seven different categories. It assists the police officers be able to count apples to apples. With that transitions how they categorize a shooting in a, in a dwelling. For example, if there's a shooting in a dwelling, however many people that are in that dwelling, it counts for how many incidents that happened in that one shooting. So that's a different increase. But it's still going to compare, right now what you're looking at is going to compare last year's numbers because we've been kind of transitioning NiBRS for some time now. And it's going to be able to compare apple to apple. So it may look high, but also with the overall numbers and you will see even, even more importantly, the simple assault. That has another sub, subsection as well within there, misdemeanors. And if you think about it, if you, communication threats or intimidation, that adds to our numbers as well. So we are, we've transitioned so that we can comparatively look at our trends from year to year to see what can we focus on. But that's also that transition happened nationally so that when we compare ourselves to other jurisdictions, we're comparing apples to apples.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Wright. Councilmember, Mayor Protim Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All my questions have basically been answered. I just basically wanted to say thank you and thank you to all your officers for everything that you do and putting your time into our great city. Thank you.
All right, well, Chief, thank you. You've heard it a thousand times, keep up the good work and we'll continue to work at it.
Thank you. Just need everybody joining in and keeping our community safe.
All right, so Council, we, I think the manager's telling us we need to receive the crime report that we received. So it's a motion, I mean, Councilmember Ingram, is that a motion? It's a motion by Councilmember Ingram to receive the report, the second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? Oh, your vote, all right, y'all quick to the trigger, y'all. Are these votes? All right, so guess no discussion, so vote, please. Councilmember Davis? Did you have a, were you voting? Can you vote? Yeah, all right. All right, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. All right, you all, I think we will kind of press in for a five-minute recess for restroom or other purposes, so we'll see you in about five minutes.
Hey, sir.
All right, Council, we will reconvene our meeting. My agenda together. Item 8.0 is the public hearing. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed, um, um, my apologies. Uh, each side will be allowed to, uh, voice their opinion. Individual speakers, uh, can have a single spokesperson if previously arranged, uh, to, as a designated speaker, um, for your particular side of the issue. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. May then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, uh, it's an indication that, that time may be running out. So, Madam Clerk, uh, do you want to do your swearing-in after Mr. Harmon?
No. We'll do it now, if that's okay.
So, uh, would you like to call, uh, any who sign, uh, Madam Attorney?
I believe, um, Mayor Protem Jensen, uh, needs to, uh, make a request, Mayor.
Okay.
Um, thank you, City Attorney. I, I would like to recuse myself from this, um, this item. Um, I have, um, I only am very close to it.
So, uh, then, uh, we need a motion to, uh, consider the recusal of Mayor Protem Jensen.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we consider, uh, that accused of, um, Councilmember Jensen, uh, concerning this matter.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Wright. There's a second by Councilmember Davis. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes for her recusal. All right, Madam Clerk, that is nine to zero. All right. So, Madam Clerk, uh, do we need to have our speakers come to be sworn in? All right. If you have signed up to speak for this, uh, particular item, can you come to the clerk's podium to be sworn in?
Now, we have 23 speakers for this item. Mr. Henry Tyson, Mr. Jonathan Charleston, Steve Weiss, Jimmy Jones, Kathy Belyou, Catherine Bamber, Riley Halliday, Jesse Garner, Leon Robertson, Rav- Ravel Rivera, Kelly Rivera, Rebecca Hankin, Brian McKnight, Barbara Neemchek, Stephen Green, Chilenko Hurst, Sharon Herrera Green, Kim Thomas, George Turner, Cynthia Dubb, Russell Jones, Carol Shepherd, and Bobby Grantham. Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Harmon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, this item is Case P-2003-F. This is a request for a special use permit to allow a halfway house to be located in an office and institutional zoning district. Uh, the property, uh, in question is located between 901 and 905 Kane Road. Uh, it's just under three acres. Uh, this is in Councilman Hare's district. Uh, zoning commission and staff have recommended approval with conditions. Just to give you an idea of where the property is located, this is, uh, there are actually two wooded lots, uh, along Kane Road near the intersection of, uh, Bragg Boulevard and Fort Bragg Road as well. Uh, current zoning in that area, you have a lot of single-family residential to the north, uh, some other residential, uh, to the west. These properties are zoned office and institutional. Uh, you have heavy commercial here along Bragg Boulevard to the south. And then, uh, single-family and office and institutional, uh, here to the east. Our land use plan, uh, had called for, uh, low-density residential through this area. But again, this has all been rezoned to, uh, commercial and office use already. Uh, as part of this, uh, there is a requirement for half-mile separation, uh, between these types of uses and other uses such as transitional housing, group homes, things of that nature. Uh, there are two former group homes that show up on this map inside the red circle. But according to the state of North Carolina, those are no longer operational. Uh, this has gone before the technical review committee, uh, for the city. And during that process, there were a few tweaks, uh, to the original plan that was submitted to them. Uh, originally, they had two entrance ways here on Kane Road. Uh, TRC, our fire department, and, uh, traffic services wanted that combined into one, uh, entrance and to relocate the entrance so that it matched up more with, uh, other streets in the area there. Um, you'll also notice, uh, here on the right-hand side of the picture, this would be on the north side, uh, of the actual, uh, property. Uh, they're planning to leave all of this area wooded. Um, currently, the whole lot is wooded, but they plan to keep all of this, uh, wooded after they develop. They only look, of the almost three acres, they're only looking to develop a little over an acre. Uh, these are the revised elevations. Um, one of the comments, uh, that came from staff that you'll see, uh, suggestions and conditions were to have the, uh, pitched roofs so that it looked a little more like, uh, residential instead of just flat roofs, looking more like, uh, some type of office complex. Uh, these are a couple of photos of the property. It's, it's, again, fairly wooded currently. These are some of the properties that do surround it. Uh, there's a body shop to one side. There's single-family residential. There's some, uh, some, uh, more high-density residential and some commercial all in that same area. Uh, again, the zoning commission and staff have recommended a few conditions. Uh, one, that, uh, that this development would, uh, follow that attached site plan, unless, as they go through, there's some elements that conflict with the UDO. Um, that they would add the roof gables and facade treatments. That's what you see on that, uh, updated, um, elevations that I just showed you. And that they would preserve a hundred-foot or greater wooded area between their facility and the single-family residential, uh, to the north. And that was what I was pointing out a moment ago as well. Um, again, the zoning commission and staff both have recommended approval. Uh, the propos- both felt that the proposed, uh, special use permit implements policies adopted in the Unified Development Ordinance. That the development, uh, of this use is allowed in the office and institutional district. It would not distract from the overall area. The propos- that the proposed SUP ensures that new development is compatible with current zoning, UDO, and the growth pattern of the area. Uh, the attached site plan and evidence that's been provided, uh, by the developer and the conditions that staff and the zoning commission, uh, both recommend. Uh, and that there are no other factors that would substantially affect public health, safety, and welfare. Um, this concludes the staff's presentation at this time. And we would ask that you hold questions till after your public hearing. You'll hear testimony on both sides from expert witnesses, and they may answer many of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. So with that, we will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our first speaker is Mr. Henry Tyson.
Tyson, so, uh, all the speakers, uh, proponents, I'm referring myself, Jonathan Charleston.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna ask the city attorney. I'd like to reserve, uh, the last five minutes of our time for any rebuttal. Okay? Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Jonathan Charleston. My address is 201 Hay Street, Suite 2000, Fayetteville, North Carolina. My address is two oh one Hay Street, Suite two thousand, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm here tonight on behalf of Dismas Charities, a not-for-profit five oh one C three founded in nineteen sixty-four by Catholic priest Father William Dirson. My client is the owner of the subject property located at nine oh one, nine oh five Kane Road. And as you've heard me say before, this property owner, like all others, seeks to have the highest and best use of their property. My client requested the City Council grant a special use permit to allow a halfway house to be located in the city's O and I district, office and institutional. And as you heard Mr. Harmon indicate earlier, uh, this district, uh, is, is appropriate to have this facility provided that a special use permit is granted. We believe that when you consider this request on the merits and in accordance with the law, it makes perfect sense for City Council to grant the request. In fact, City Council has granted a similar request on Ramsey Street near the intersection of Country Club Drive, which I will discuss further later in this presentation. I might say that it was, uh, a substantial approval, uh, by the members of City Council. Dismas Charities has been providing services to federal and state, for federal and state inmates since nineteen sixty-four. That's a long time. Today, the charity operates thirty-five programs for federal and state inmates in thirteen states. The track record for safety, security, and accountability is impeccable. In support of this effort, we have met with community members and discussed this project, been very clear about what this project is and what it's not. And I want to thank, uh, Pastor Brian Thompson at Simon Temple for hosting, allowing us to, uh, host a community event at his church where about twenty folks from the community came out, some of them were members of his church. I'd also like to thank, uh, personally, the pastor and congregation of Cornerstone Church, which is right around the corner from this, uh, proposed project. Now, one of the things I'd also like to point out is, as you've probably seen from the materials, is that this project, this property right now, is currently a heavily wooded area. I mean, heavily wooded area. And the, the actual lot sits next to a community commercial site, which, uh, O and I is deemed by the city to be an appropriate buffer between commercial and residential. So, the way this is set up is exactly the way the city envisioned it. So, as mentioned earlier, the zoning commission unanimously, I believe it was, and the planning staff have both recommended approval. Now, what I'd like to point out and remind City Council is that this is a quasi-judicial proceeding. This is not one, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on what your thought process is, where we listen to anything other than what the findings of fact are. The North Carolina Supreme Court's been very clear on this point. It says that when an applicant has produced competent material and substantial evidence tending to establish the existence of facts and conditions which the ordinance requires for the issuance of a special use permit, prima facie, the applicant is entitled to a grant of that special use permit. A denial of the permit should be based solely on findings to the contrary, which are supported by, again, competent material and substantial evidence appearing in the record. And I'm going to cite that case for you. It's Humble Oil and Refining Company versus Board of Alderman of the Town of Chapel Hill. It's a North Carolina Supreme Court case from January nineteen seventy-four. I believe the City Attorney will confirm that this is still the law in North Carolina. That is the law, and that those are the guidelines pursuant to which counsel must act tonight. There are eight criteria established by the City Council, each of which, uh, the planning commission has, and the, uh, the planning staff have deemed to be, uh, competent evidence. The first is, the special use can, uh, complies with the applicable standards in section thirty dash four-point C of the special use specific standards. Number one, the only requirement is that there are no other group homes, therapeutic homes, halfway houses, or transitional housing within twenty-six-hundred-and-forty feet of this property. That's a fact. That is a specific finding of your planning staff and of your, uh, of your zone, your planning commission, your zoning commission. The special use has to be compatible with the character, character of surrounding lands and the uses permitted in zoning districts. The property is currently zoned O and I, which the UDO calls for as a buffer district between residential and commercial uses. Fact. The special use avoids significant adverse impact on surrounding lands regarding service delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibration. Again, in this particular instance, it's the fact that the, the ingress and egress to the site will be through one access driveway constructed to city standards for two-way traffic. These access points will allow dumpster pickup and deliveries to occur on-site without impeding the public right-of-way. Standard four, the special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts on the proposed use of the adjacent lands. As I mentioned earlier, uh, this is approximately a three-acre site, but only about an acre and a half will be developed. The site is heavily wooded, and it, it is the owner's intent to develop the property, maintaining as many of the existing trees as possible, as well as planning new landscaping to meet the city's UDO. And I might add that we had a long meeting today with one of the, uh, community members, and we made it, uh, really clear with them that, uh, the wooded area, the buffer, the screening with all the trees, all the woods is going to stay in place. There's also going to be a two-sided, eight-foot privacy fence built all the way around the perimeter. And there's already fencing around the perimeter as it is now, but we're going to have privacy fencing. And I think we satisfied that family that you will not be able to see this site at all because if you look at where the site is, the, uh, the actual construction of the improvement is going to be closest to the body shop going towards Bragg Boulevard. There's going to be about two hundred feet that's undeveloped and left wooded to ensure that, uh, the area is properly screened and that, uh, there'll be privacy. The neighbors won't even be able to see the site. And as, uh, Mr. Harmon mentioned earlier, the facility is designed to blend in with the community in terms of the pitch of the house, uh, pitch of the roof to match, uh, what the other roofs look like in that area. Finding number five, the special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources. Um, there, the planning commission found that as a fact. Number six, the special use maintains safe ingress and egress into the site and safe road conditions around the site. As was found by staff and endorsed by the planning commission, and we believe is a fact, this property is located on what's been described and determined by the city to be a minor arterial road with one proposed ingress and egress point as specified by the Fayetteville's Fire Marshal's Office. That's on the site plan, that's a part of the package. Item number seven, and this is one I, I think I want to spend a little time on. The special use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district. Oftentimes, what you hear is that any time a use that's not residential, um, begins to, to come into a, an area, you typically hear that it's going to have an adverse effect on the property values. Uh, Counsel, there is a, a document, uh, handed out to you earlier. Could you all, do you all have this? Everybody has this? Let me talk about this for just a minute. This is a, uh, an analysis that was provided by, uh, David Evans, who was a, uh, prevent, professional, um, uh, real estate person here in Fayetteville. And what this shows is, remember I talked to you a little earlier about a similar project that this city, not this particular city council, but a prior city council voted on? There is a similar facility right now in operation, uh, near the intersection of Country Club Drive and Ramsey Street, right there near the Dunkin' Donuts, in that shopping center. There's a manor church in that shopping center, and, uh, Dunkin' Donuts is there. But what this schedule shows you, that from the, the five years in review up to this date, in the last, uh, five years, it shows you how many transactions have closed, the average home sold per month. You know, same thing within one year, the same thing within the last six months. But what's very interesting here is that the average list price for these homes has increased over the period of time that, uh, this particular project has been located, uh, where it is today. And the average sales price has increased by ten thousand dollars. So, the argument that there's been an adverse, uh, impact on the values of the property, uh, we contend simply, uh, there's no evidence in the file in this case that there was any adverse effect on the property values. And, uh, one of the other things I'll tell you is that this, uh, report also shows the number of houses sold in that district. This is the E.E. Smith High School District. During the same period of time, three hundred and seventy houses sold. In the county, there was forty-six-hundred-and-twenty-one. So, the average, uh, per square, uh, uh, cost is also set forth here. So, we would argue that there's not been any evidence, uh, in the record, uh, that's been considered at any of the, the prior hearings or any of the prior community meetings that will show that there'll be any adverse effect on the property value. And it is a fact that there has, uh, been no evidence presented that property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop would negatively be impacted. Number eight, the special use complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations. Of course, uh, we would have to comply with that. So, as mentioned by, uh, the planning staff, the, the zoning commission and the planning staff recommended approval of this proposed, uh, special use permit, uh, for the reasons set forth in the report. One, that, uh, the proposed permit implements the policies adopted in the UDO, that the development of the use, uh, is allowed in an O and I district and will not detract from the overall area, that the proposed, uh, permit ensures that new development is compatible with the current zoning and UDO and growth pattern. Uh, to this point, um, I'd like to, um, I'd like to point out that in this area where the development is going, there is, uh, tremendous amount of commercial property in that area. Um, if you look around on all the reports that are in your file, uh, everything around this property, with the exception of the residential behind and, uh, going down Kane Road towards Pamley Drive. Okay, great, thanks. Do you have this in your materials? All right, the, the grid on the top has a star. That shows the existing facility that's located in the shopping center on Ramsey Street. If you look around, all of that around that facility is green, which is, which is commercial. Okay? If you look at the proposed site on Kane Road, everything around that location, with the exception of the residential, uh, site, uh, area that's going down Shamrock and everything going down towards, uh, Pamley Drive, everything in that area is commercial. I mean, all up and down Bragg Boulevard, the site, the lot ex- exactly adjacent, uh, to this property is heavy commercial, so it's a body shop. Across the street, you have the CVS, you have the Utah Shopping Center, you have all of that stuff in that area. So, I wanted to point this out, and I wanted you to see both the, both of these situations that the city, uh, has in the, uh, going on right now. The first one, as I mentioned before, on the top, uh, shows what the, uh, what the zoning looks like and, uh, on the Ramsey Street site. And I would venture to say that there's as much commercial, uh, on the proposed site on Kane Road as there is on Ramsey Street. As I mentioned to you earlier, um, this case, because it is a quasi-judicial case, it's not based on conjecture or opinions or any of those things. It's based solely on what the facts are. That's what you have to consider as a counsel. You're acting essentially as a court, and you have to consider the evidence. And, and if, I mean, that's what either side gets to appeal in the event that, you know, one side decides to appeal and the other side, you know, doesn't. But I will say to you that the facts in this case are, that you have to consider, are those eight criteria established by this City Council. Now, I've been, uh, dealing with this not-in-my-backyard stuff for a long time. It's real. No one wants any kind of use in their community that they think may have an adverse impact. I get that, I understand that. But the law, and the law in this country, uh, says you can't discriminate when it comes to housing. And essentially, what's happening with this proposed facility is that you're providing housing for people that are transitioning from incarceration and freedom. One of the points I would make to you is that this particular facility would have a contract with federal government to house inmates coming out of incarceration in the Eastern District of North Carolina. That means the federal inmates that are incarcerated or have been sentenced by the federal courts in the Eastern District. That's from Raleigh East. That's Raleigh, Fayetteville, New Bern, Kinston, Wilmington, all of those areas. Some of these folks are going to be coming back to their communities. They're at the very end of their, uh, of their incarceration. This is the six-month transition period. And the key is to make sure that these folks are successfully, uh, integrated back into their communities. They've served their time. And, uh, this particular facility, folks, is state-of-the-art, the, you know, highest levels of security, highest levels of maintenance that it will have on it. It will not be intrusive with respect to the community. And, uh, I would say to you that, as I mentioned to you before, that if the, uh, facts have been established that tend to show, uh, the existence of the conditions required by City Council, I mean, you're required to grant the special use permit unless, you know, contrary evidence that's competent is presented to you to the contrary. And so, I will ask that, at this point, there was a couple of things I wanted to show you. On this particular page, I wanted you to look at this. The area that's highlighted in yellow is the wooded area on the site, which is going to be maintained. Okay? The, these trees and screening is going to be left there. And on this side right here is where most of the families are that we met with on Shamrock and going back down Kane Road. As you can see, it's approximately two hundred feet of buffer, trees. Uh, in, in addition, we're going to put an eight-foot privacy fence that's going to be finished on both sides. Uh, we talked to Mr. and Mrs. Dove today at their home, and they asked a lot of great questions about this. And we said that, uh, you know, the fence was going to be put there. It's not required because of the screening, but we agreed to put a fence around the entire perimeter of the project, eight-foot security fence. The security cameras there, I understand, uh, Councilmember Dawkins, you talked about security cameras earlier. There's going to be no less than probably thirty-five to forty security cameras. This, uh, facility will use biometrics to come in and out. That's when the, you know, scanning the eyes, fingerprints, double security on it, meaning not only does the person that's coming in, the inmate, get scanned or fingerprinted with the biometric stuff, but the person that's signing them in and out has to verify that they signed them in and out. Also, these folks are going to be employed in our community. They'll be employed or they will be in school. There are a number of letters that we've handed up that indicates to you the level of support that we have in the community. One of the first letters, Mayor, is from Nancy Vaughn, who's the mayor of Greensboro, that talked about the success of this project in their city. There's one that Dismas runs in the city of Greensboro. And her letter, which is on the top here, talks about the tremendous success that they had in Greensboro in getting folks to successfully come through a reentry program in their city. And there are other letters from the city of Montgomery, Alabama, from the Nashville Metropolitan Police Department, from the city of Hattiesburg, Mississippi, from the city of Tucson, from a federal judge in the United States District Court. And also, the last one I have, there is a letter from Manor Church. And I'm going to read that one. It says, "Recently, I was informed of your proposed residential reentry center to be located on Kane Road. This letter is to express support for the proposed center. There is a need for such a facility in our community, and I support Dismas Charity's nonprofit mission to provide safe, effective reentry services for our returning offenders. The Fayetteville community and the men and women who come through this center will benefit from the support and supervision the program provides. I also think that the proposed center will improve public safety." In addition, there are some other letters that are in the materials that we have provided to you that are from people that have either agreed to serve on the, like, the voluntary community board or folks that have agreed to provide and interview folks for work. So I'm going to reserve the remainder of my time for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker, excuse me, is Mr. Rafael Rivera.
Good evening, sir.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rafael Rivera. I live off of Manio Street, which is in Greenwood Homes, which is District Two. And I'd like to apologize for being unprepared because this is something I just found out about Friday through the Nextdoor app. I spent a lot of time trying to do some research at work today, and if my boss is watching, I want to apologize to her. But my concern about this facility, and by all means, I understand facilities like this need to be. My older brother in California was in halfway houses, so I understand the importance. My concern is the location. There were letters that were taken out by Kathy Blue asking for approval. I apologize. Someone in, someone in 4112 Brent Grass in Fayetteville, North Carolina, who lives 11 miles away, said she approved this for her community. To me, 11 miles away is not her community. A gentleman, a lady in Bun Level, North Carolina, signed a statement that says, "There is a need for such a facility in our community." It's not her community. Another individual who signed a statement lives in Sanford, North Carolina, 18 miles away. The statement says, "There is a need for such a facility in our community." Sanford is not their community. I'm opposed against this. It should be in a different location, in my opinion. I mean, that's, unfortunately, I wish I had some more, but the only people that went around and got to sign one of these statements was either churches, FTCC, or business owners, fast food franchises. And it was actually assistant managers at these franchises, at McDonald's and stuff that signed these. I'm pretty sure the franchisee owner or the corporate didn't know about none of this. As far as the housings, the sales of housings, I believe from my understanding, you don't have to inform a buyer that there's a halfway house down the road. It's up to the buyer who has to. From my understanding, it's up to the buyer to do research of what's going on in that community. Out of everybody in Greenwood Homes, neighboring communities, Greenwood Homes, College Heights, Utah, no one was given a letter or statement to sign that, say, "Yes, I'm for it." And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Kelly Rivera.
Thank you very much for hearing us today. My name is Kelly Rivera. I live on Mantio Street. I'm a second-generation family member that's owned a home in this neighborhood. There's a few objections I have to what was said earlier. First of all, he keeps pointing to mainly business around this. It is not business. And the original proposal had even stated that three of the four sides are residential. Three of the four sides. It is not CVS that is in front of it. It is a group of duplexes that I lived in as a young person, and we have a lot of young people that live in that now. So first of all, that, CVS is not to the east. Second of all, they failed to mention in this public hearing, this is a 14,000-square-foot facility. From what we've tried to dig up, because no information has been provided to our community and was not notified of a hearing or a meeting, except for people that lived within 500 feet of the area. Another thing is, the sign was not put up till Friday. So we haven't had a year to prepare for this with different studies and different things for this. So this has really been a rushed job to get it right through. I know he kept saying that you must approve this based on the criteria that he stated. I beg to differ also, too. He stated that, and please forgive me, I've had no sleep since that sign was put up Friday. He stated, and please forgive me, I'm going to add a little bit, that basically, within a half-mile radius, there was no other halfway houses. He named things that rehab, halfway houses, things like that are not in that half-mile radius. I beg to differ. There's an Oxford House on Stamper Road. And within the circle of the proposal you had, that house is within the circle that you drew. So yes, there is another facility in that area. Second of all, we heard that these people are going to be, like you said, working in our community. Be out unsupervised. Please understand also, too, with less than a minute walking distance is formerly, they call it the heart of Fayetteville, which is now the Knights Inn. We had, I'm also an ex-community vice chair of our Community Watch. You talk about how important Community Watch is, how important crime is in this neighborhood in Fayetteville, and you're going to do nothing but raise it in ours. You're going to sacrifice our neighborhoods for this. There is a known drug problem there at the heart of Fayetteville, AKA Knights Inn. It is known by the Fayetteville Police Department Special Task Force for Human Trafficking. We are number one in North Carolina in human trafficking. We have been told by the police department at our meetings and by, and please forgive me, Five Sparrows. It's a nonprofit organization that helps women transition from market, from this human trafficking, that there is a drug and a prostitution problem in this. At night, I won't even go up to CVS because there are people standing on the streets selling drugs, and nothing's done about it. So he tells us the only thing we can do is you have to vote his way unless we present evidence. So in plain words, it doesn't matter that you say that you presented this to the community and you didn't. And number two, there is another place in our neighborhood that's within the half-mile radius circle that we found online. My husband had to dig up a bunch of information. I tried to reach out to my own council member three times for information, and I got nothing. Please, and I understand, don't get me wrong, that this was only two days ago that I reached out to you, but we just found out three days ago, too. I thought I'd get more help with it, but I didn't. And second of all, this is not a halfway house. And I hate that terminology because what we've been told is it can house up to 100 beds. So we're going to have 100 criminals in our neighborhood daily, walking around and visiting probably the heart of Fayetteville every day with drugs and prostitution, increasing the crime in our neighborhood. It is not solely commercial. That's another falsehood. It is three sides, residential, heavy, dense homes, of people that have worked hard for their homes and have lived here for a long time. So at this time, and please forgive me, with all respect to all of you, I appreciate you listening to me. I've had no sleep. There are so many things wrong with what he had said, and I know that attorneys can turn words to make it sound better for themselves. We just sat here and watched how the ball field had to make it amended because they need more money and they need to change what was originally done. Who's to say he's not going to come forward and say, "We need to amend what we originally proposed" and not give what he's promising? You can hand somebody a bunch of wishes, but what really happens is up to them once they get the approval. So I'm just asking respectfully, please deny this. And please look in, if nothing else, if it's based on facts, the falsehoods in the statement. Also, that there is a location, and this is not a halfway house. I hate that terminology. There should be something wrong with that. It's a residential reentry center, an institution. It is not a halfway house. It belongs in a residential community, 75% covered by residents. That we have, and he uses "not in our backyard," then let's build it in your backyard. This is literally in our backyard, right up against us. We're going to have all these criminals walking our streets daily, and you sit here.
Ma'am, your testimony should come to the council, okay?
And I'm so sorry. I apologize. I'm just so upset about this. There's so many falsehoods in what was said. And we haven't had the time, or nobody's come to us. I live half, less than, less than a mile from this location, blocks, walking distance. And we weren't told about this until we drove by and saw the sign and Nextdoor had a story on it. Friday, there should have been more time allotted for this and more findings. And please look into that other rehabilitation center that's on Stamper.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Rebecca Hankin.
As part of my presentation, I have some elderly people. Oh, I didn't tell you my name and address, right?
Yes, please.
Rebecca Hankin, 1802 Magoogan.
Thank you.
I have Ms. Ellerby here, who made calls all afternoon, phone calls on a phone tree to gather together some residents to come. And I'm going to let her go on home because it's past her bedtime. Thank you. If she could stand, you could see her as well. Such a wonderful lady. So teacher in the school system for 30 years.
I as well grew up in the neighborhood. I, my dad, we just sold his house about a year ago after he passed away. And I really would like to say that we are not exactly understanding what you're saying about the special use permit, but we're not willing to sign anything to jeopardize our chance to have another look at that. Because in my mind, we should know fully what we are asked to do. Okay, I'm going to start with just a quick description of our neighborhood. We have a low crime rate, and we have reasonably priced homes, many just around $100,000 or $105, $110,000. Most of the homes are well-kept, and they have been remodeled and renovated, and people have spent thousands and thousands of dollars to keep their homes looking nice. And also, I just would like to say that there are a lot of problems related to accepting this and providing lodging for criminals in our neighborhood. There are about 1,000 or possibly more homes in the following neighborhoods, if you group all those numbers together. Scotty Hills, which contains Food Lion. Utah Homes, which are right back behind the IGA, called the cottages right now. Greenwood Homes, which is where I live. Eden Rock, which is right next, between Cumberland Heights and Greenwood, and Cumberland Heights. There are many grocery stores and pharmacies where people frequent. And you know how when you get used to your little grocery store or whatever, if you can't get there, you feel sort of displaced. And I honestly don't think that many, especially women, would be out driving around in the evening just because they feel it to be too dangerous, even now. So I would also like to say that, as Kelly stated, there are several areas where continued drugs can be sought at a price. And that's all I'll say about that, since she spoke about that. Now, I would like to say that there are two groups of people who would be harmed by living in these areas where criminals roam. Children in our areas usually ride the bus. Not very many of them have parents who are available to take them to school and back. So they ride the bus. None of us would feel very safe having kids at a bus stop if we knew that there were people out walking around who had previously been incarcerated. It might also lead for fear, lead to fear for the kids that are involved if they see the anxiety of their parents as they take them out to the bus and come right back in the afternoon and pick them up from bus. So children, children tend to look at us and think and make their own conclusions. And I feel that it would cause them to become fearful in their own homes and yards. The other group is the seniors. They have worked many years to retire and to live comfortably the rest of their lives. Seniors already fear out to go out at night. There may be other issues as well. But at this time, I would like to say, no permit changes, no criminals in our backyard. Those are issues that we would like to have a chance to discuss with the proper authorities. And thank you so much for your time, and I as well. I'm sorry that it's a bit put together, a bit piecemeal, but we appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you.
Mr. Brian McKnight.
Good evening, council. As the previous people before me have all stated, I have very little to add that's new to that. You see your pro and you see your con, which is at every side of every situation. We represent the con naturally as the residents of that community. This has all been very sudden to each of the residents in that community. A letter was printed up by one of the residents, very intelligently so, to make us aware of what was going on. But the postal system, the post office carrier, removed all of those letters from the homes as they were placed in mailboxes, unbeknownst to the fact that that's against the law. So again, we have a failure of communication. I don't like to read. I'm a former elder in my church, and I have delivered sermons upon sermons, and I don't feel they're very effective when you read. However, tonight I must, because I am trying to gather so much information into such a short period of time. I was most disheartened in the process of all of this to learn that Dismas Charities has already purchased this property. I asked them that specifically. I know you told me. I know you told the former lady to keep my comments directed to you, mayor. I could not believe the presumption that went into that decision other than to wonder what type of system I am currently living in in Fayetteville to make it sound like this is a done deal. I won't say the amount that was quoted to me, but it was a sizable amount that they purchased this property for. And in doing so, I don't believe that they did so blindly. I feel that they knew the facts, that they did their homework, and that they knew, basically as this attorney said to me this afternoon, this is a done deal. And to get up here and state before all of you that you must comply with whatever laws are in place certainly does not remind me of a democratic society. And I believe, Mayor Colvin, that we do still have a degree of that with you city council members. My name, I am sorry to say, I failed to mention, is Brian McKnight. I am a homeowner at thirty-two oh six Shamrock Drive. I have come to this meeting tonight to appeal to you and 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 all of you. I am appealing from my heart, which I might add. I live day to day with no promise of tomorrow because I live with what is called the widow maker. I had two massive heart attacks in April of two thousand and eighteen. I coded for three minutes. They were able to do what they could for me, but they cannot go any further due to other circumstances. Doctor told me, "Go home and get your affairs in order, Mr. McKnight." It could be any day, whether I look like that or not. I have a wife, a mother-in-law, who lives with us at ninety-two years of age, and also a seventeen-year-old granddaughter. And if I were to pass away very suddenly, my concern is for those three females with such a, I'm sorry, with such a facility as this, basically in our front yard. Basically, that's where it's going to be, wall, barrier, whatever. Bottom line is you are having a hundred-plus criminals, as the young lady just spoke, in a three-sided residential community. The only businesses close to this proposal are, as she said, a basically shut-down body shop. The only thing that happens there now is towing services. There is no functional part of that shop otherwise. So I am here, as I said, to appeal. And the young lady said that and the young gentleman said this also. I'm here to appeal for adequate information. And I am requesting that we have more concentrated efforts into what this huge decision actually entails. This is not, I've told the group here, I wouldn't be objected to a car wash, another Christian type of school, anything. But yes, I am very opposed to a halfway house in my front yard with ex-federal prisoners. This facility is located, as I said, two-tenths of a mile from my residence. And admittedly, I have deep concerns regarding the obvious magnitude and impact of this decision and the long-term effects. I'm worried about the morale and the appeal, which versus the negative connotation that the placement of this institution will no doubtably have on our community. Young lady stated the unfortunate facts of the Knights Inn. My wife is an outside sales representative, not at the Knights Inn, but the Knights Inn is under her umbrella. And it's not one of their properties that they're proud of. That in conjunction with this halfway house is only a matter of a few tenths of a mile. Are all of you pretty much familiar with the area that we are generally talking about here tonight? Are you mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so I am first of all concerned about my home property value. What is going to happen to that? I don't agree with his facts at all. I think any one of us who would sit down and say, "I'm about to make a purchase, a sizable purchase, one of the biggest purchases you're ever going to make, which is your home, your property." I think every one of us would second guess making that type of a purchase in a community as such with a halfway house. So I have concerns also as to how that's going to affect my homeowners' insurance rates. I understand that that's involved and many others. It is my understanding that council members DJ Hair, Johnny Dawkins, and Courtney Banks-McLaughlin are also in favor of a delay of approval for this significant of a purchase. And I thank you. To my knowledge, the only requirement of the zoning and code enforcement was that those within five hundred feet be notified. We were not notified. Logan's Body Shop, as I said, is the only establishment that would be involved respectively. Furthermore, I suggested to this group there be a location very nearby, within a mile, as each of you will probably be aware, of cleared land suitable for sale to their purposes, located on Sycamore Dairy Road, right next to the sub-police station. But however, they've already made the purchase. So it's a done deal. And it's just being forced down our throats. May I ask you, city council tonight, how the magnitude of such a significant decision was done so democratically, justly, or with just plain old consideration for people like me and like them? We are all homeowners who have sacrificed through the years to make our home our major investment, to be the most significant financial security as we reach our later years. My father-in-law, Tony Petroselli, a very wise man, often said and used the term of these three words. Location, location, location. Proper location is key to all of those who are involved here tonight. Thank you very respectfully, council, for hearing me.
Thank you.
Ms. Barbara Nemchek.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Nemchek. I also live on Mantio Street in Greenwood Homes, District Two. I have lived there for thirteen years. I have a daughter that's lived there for seventeen and is a teacher in Cumberland County. We are both opposed to this. I am opposed to the federal halfway house being built on Kane Road near Bragg Boulevard. Over the past two years, there has been a decline of businesses located on the Boulevard and an increase of homelessness, prostitution, and drug activity. Greenwood Homes has brought this to the attention of our previous city councilman, Community Watch, and at the event hosted by the Fayetteville Observer for the development of Murkison Road. I have never been given a direct answer as to how the city could help bring the revitalization of downtown and Murkison Road to Bragg Boulevard. This federal halfway house would only further decline Bragg Boulevard and the housing developments off of it. I am also concerned for the safety of our community members, young and old. Thank you.
Mr. Stephen Green.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Green. I live at eighteen eighteen Mantio Street. I really don't have much at all to say. I recently retired from the Army. I served twenty years. I was the only intel analyst that any special forces group ever had, so I'm good at analyzing some details. Little details like what's been put on the screen beforehand of the photographs of where this facility is going to be. The one photograph I noticed that was missing is that wooded area that keeps being brought up in cartoon pictures. There's no photograph because there's no wooded area. I'm from Louisiana. I was in the Army. I know the woods. That's not what I would call the woods. There's some scrubs, some little scrub trees, but that lot, that's, yeah, I was shocked when I heard where it was. And like the rest of our very small group here, we're the few people that heard about this in time to make it here and present something to the council. Yeah, no, it's definitely not, it's not a commercial area with a heavily wooded giant lot. This building that's going in, the fourteen thousand square feet facility with high walls and biometric scanners and cameras and prison inmates inside, convicts. That's not a halfway house. That's a prison, less than a quarter mile from my house, where I just retired. I'm with my wife, my daughter, trying to be retired, trying to raise my family. And to find out how shady this was done, how underhanded and sneaky this was done, the only flyers that went out were picked up and discarded. The fact that the people that have information to present, beautiful boards and slides, PowerPoint, everything, had more than a year to get that together. They reached out to the local businesses, the assistant manager of McDonald's, people that really aren't affected, people who live in Sanford, people who live in Bun Level. Those are the people we're going to reach out to and ask if they care if a building with convicts is in my neighborhood. No, they're fine with that. They're cool. I have nothing but issues with it. I wanted to come tonight. I greatly appreciate being given the time to at least speak my mind on it. I don't even know what to think of this. I just hope the actual facts are being considered. I agree with one thing that was presented. With the facts, the actual truthful facts being presented, you would have to follow those guidelines and that's one-hundred percent accurate. If what he presented was actual facts and not a lot of smoke and mirrors and I'm not going to show you the actual lot we're going to put it in. Yeah, if you look at the facts, we could all go there right now and look at that giant wooded lot. If we look at the facts, then no, this falls flat on its face. This is garbage. And I hope everyone here considers it for what it really is. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chilenko Hurst. I think he left. Ms. Shannon Herrera-Green.
Good evening, everyone. I won't take up a whole lot of your time. I would like to say, much like Kelly Rivera, I'm a third-generation Greenwood Homes resident raising a fourth generation in a home that was built by my grandparents. I understand from sitting back here and kind of watching, I've been up since six o'clock working. I'm sick, not feeling well, and I knew I had to be here tonight. And it's a little insulting to sit on the back row and, I know I make my comments, I can't keep my mouth shut. Born and raised here. My mom's from Supona Road. Got a long line to be in here. But as I sit behind these gentlemen and watch their reactions to what is being said by the people from our community, it's insulting. I'm sorry, it is. And while I understand that this is quasi-judicial and that opinions shouldn't matter, at the end of the day, they do. It matters to me. It matters to me because my mother, who built her home on Magoogan Road, is turning eighty years old in three months and still lives on the street behind me. I have a fifteen-year-old daughter that I've left at home alone tonight, but I probably won't feel safe doing that. And I get it. It's a done deal. I understand it. If it's been sold, it's been sold. If they're going to put it up, they're going to put it up. At the end of the day, our opinions do matter. And I get, you know, not in my backyard, not in my front yard, whatever. It gets to be monotonous and ridiculous. It's going to be put up whether we want it there or not. But don't come in here and insult our intelligence and think that we're just a bunch of podunk people because we're not. We're not.
Address the council for me, ma'am.
That's all I wanted to say. I appreciate the time. I just, I wish some consideration would be taken for what we have to say. That's all that we want is to be heard. And we didn't have a year to plan our rebuttal. We had three days. Three days. And unfortunately, unlike the manager of Burger King and McDonald's, I didn't get to meet any of these gentlemen over the course of the past three days for them to have my opinion of the facility. But I'm sure they probably didn't want it. Thank you.
Kim Thomas.
Hello? Hi. Thank you for hearing us out today. My name is Kim Thomas. I am a resident on Hilton Drive, which is actually a little ways away from the subject area. Having said that, it is within my neighborhood and I am concerned. Reached out to my representative, Ms. Waddell, and she was kind enough to send the information on the proposal. I have several things to bring up and I hope that they will be relevant. I might take a little bit of extra time and I might be a little bit erratic and jumping around. You've already heard about the sign that just went up on Friday. We just found out about this and that's also my experience. But I do think I can present some things that will show you that it is not proper. It is not proper placement. It is not properly done and that there is some erroneous and false information that has been presented this evening for this information. First of all, the information that went out to all of you that had the copies of documents and such that I saw the dismissed attorney presenting, we haven't seen any of those. Again, we would like the chance to rebut against that. But several things that have come to mind on me. I've heard a lot of things about the Murkison Road and Bragg Boulevard improving these districts. Can anyone tell me how this particular institution or facility, home, whatever you'd like to call it, will improve these areas? I cannot see any benefit to this particular area that would help it improve. Again, you've already heard, this facility is enclosed on three sides by residential. That is not conducive to the environment that it is going into to be, while it is a residential facility, it is not in keeping with the area. I thought that the idea of placing it over next to the police station sounded mar- I thought that the idea of placing it over next to the police station sounded marvelous. Sounds great to me. That would probably be more in keeping. Haven't looked at it yet. I would reserve judgment on that, but that would be my thoughts. I've also heard tonight that the decision's already been made. I don't know anything about that. I am going to reserve judgment on that. I refuse to believe that. I came to this meeting this evening fully with an open mind. I sincerely believe and do think that former criminals need a place to be re-entered into communities. I have no problem with that. But one thing I have not heard this evening is how many people, how many beds are we talking about? I've heard rumors of a hundred beds. I don't know if that's true or not. I believe that the facility on Ramsey Street, and I very well could be wrong on this because the location that I had mapped it out on was across the street, but I think it has thirty-eight beds was what I believe I had seen. So if in fact there is a large discrimination between these facilities, please take that into account. I can't attest to it or not. Maybe, maybe y'all have that information, but we don't. Again, one thing another gentleman had brought up was, I keep hearing this thing about all the woods that are between, that are between these facilities. These aren't woods. It's brush. It's overgrown, okay? There are no, if there are trees, there are very few, but quite frankly, nobody cares. Since when is a tree or your eight-foot fence going to prevent someone from rifling through your neighborhood? Someone from going through your cars and trying to open doors? If I'm not mistaken, the chief of police had made a presentation earlier about all of the break-ins that they had in an area that I believe was, was said to be on Bragg Boulevard? So, okay, so let's invite some people in that might be more upped or more, if they went down a wrong road, to do that again. I think Bragg Boulevard is a little bit inundated at this point. Let's give the police department. I mean, city officials have been consulted on this. Has anyone spoke with the police department? Has anyone asked them their thoughts? Has anyone asked them about the criminal, you know, proposed criminal activity? I don't know these things. Let's see. What you, the area, my field, and I've been a resident in the area, have owned a home here for over ten years. By the way, our property value, you know how much has gone up? Zero. And not due to ill maintenance, not due to criminal activity in our neighborhood, not to the lack of community involvement. But it's due to everything that's around us, that's an outlying area. I am still sitting on a home that's worth a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, hundred and forty, hundred and thirty-five to hundred and forty thousand dollars, when we bought it in two thousand and nine. Something should be there, something. It's not. And we're looking at retirement in the next three years. You want me to stay in Fayetteville? Don't, 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 don't put a facility like this two miles down the road. I have a thirteen-year-old son. You know where he's talking about going to high school at? He's talking about going to high school at Massey Hill. We're waiting on his application right now to be approved, we hope. You know where he's been going to school? Mac Williams. I won't allow my child to go to the facility or to go to the school that we are district for. They said they couldn't handle his special needs. You know why? Because he's twice exceptional. For anybody doesn't know that, that means he has a disability, but he's also extremely bright. He is a gifted child. He has the IQ of a hundred, close to a hundred and fifty, but he's autistic. Those are the people that you want in your community to help.
So we've got to kind of bring it back to this decision?
Understand, understand. But I am worried about my child, who is thirteen years old now. He is going to be driving to the area. He will be driving through that area when he starts going to school. Did you know that Fayetteville, Fayetteville College is right there? How many high schools are on that campus? Two, I think? I know at least one, I think, too. That's also a concern. But as I said, these, these, these folks need to be able to be reintegrated into the community. They need to have a place where they can go to school and be reeducated. No problem with that, but they don't all, if it is a hundred people, do we all need to have them right there? Isn't it more appropriate to spread them out? You know, I would think that they could be helped in smaller groups and have a smaller communities and be more accepting of pockets, even if it's pockets around Fayetteville. That's great, but not a large, this large facility in one location. Other things I want to point out. In the proposal, the, what's called the legislation text, it's currently under development and is, I believe it's primarily zoned for O and I. There again, I could be wrong, but I believe that there is a portion of this property that is not O and I. I believe there is a portion that is still residential. Again, I don't know that for a fact, but I would at least ask that it be looked into. The, the presentation shows oddly enough that on the north is single-family residential, on the south is auto repair, the west is apartments. Not residential, but apartments, that's residential. And then to the east, there is an office, an office, and a single, and single-family residential. Transportation, and I'm looking, if anyone does want to follow along on page two of their, of the legislation text. Let's see. It talks about that the annual average daily traffic is eighty-two hundred people or eighty-two hundred vehicles at the intersection of Kane Road and Shamrock Drive. Well, that's great, but let's also look at the intersection of Kane Road and Bragg Boulevard, which is where the mass of this, of any traffic would likely be at. Let's also look at the mass of traffic that's going to be at Kane Road and Pamela Lee. Guess what's at the other side of that road? Residential. It's not fitting for the community. The other thing is, I see on here that there are several, there's referencing attachments for the record with what I received, which I totally understand, I did not receive any attachments, so I'm not able to speak to those or take a good look at them. The, it says it's land use plan, low-density residential? So is it, is it low-density residential? Is that what it's planned for, or is it O and I? I don't, I'm seeing conflicting information in this report. Technical review committee. Says that the technical review committee conducted a pre-application review of the site plan for this project. Great. No problem. Representatives from the city and the developer were present. What representatives were at this meeting? Was it anyone here? Okay. That, I'm curious of that, and I would hope that you guys are, too. The subject property is, it says it is zoned office and institutional. I do believe it is primarily, but there again, it is not completely zoned. The end of a commercial intersection, at one end, it is a commercial intersection. At the other end, it's far more residential than it is commercial. According to the applicant, the proposed facility will be a community-based re-entry program. Who's, what community? Are we talking about the community of, of this facility? Or are we talking about the community around it? And it says here, it will, it will not be a secure detention facility such as a prison or jail. Well, these people have served their debt to society. We get that, but it does still need to be secure. Frankly, we're not concerned about your thirty-six cameras that are inside or on that property. We're concerned about what's going to go on outside of that property, outside of that big eight-foot fence. That's where the concern is. We're not going to fall for the smoke and mirrors there. Again, how many residents? It's not mentioned anywhere in here. It says here that the facility will house adult, male and female offenders. Can this change? Because, you know, they get their foot in the door, and then it's only one story. Can they build on it later on and make it two? When is this facility going to get larger? There was mention in here about that they're going to be closely monitored and supervised. Does anybody have any answers as to what the definition?
So ma'am, so what I'm going to have to do is gear us to kind of putting a little bit more finality to your comments because we're kind of moving around in a different, in a few different spaces. So if you could kind of center it to, to your argument and let's bring it. I think we still have some other speakers.
Okay. I'm going over the, my questions from the, that are in, specifically in this legislation text.
Because what you're supposedly giving us is testimony that, that we're acting as a body.
I'm giving you the testimony that this has not been accurate, but what I believe to be looked at properly and to show that it is not within the body of the law to approve. It says in here that it, that the facility ensures consistent supervision. Consistent or constant? There's a difference there. Twenty-eight staff positions and supervisory coverage provided twenty-four hours a day. I understand that apparently, there's something in here, and I don't know about it, but that it, it falls within the prison statement, statements of war. I think this is probably a little bit misleading. There will be twenty-eight staff positions and supervisory coverage provided twenty-four, seven. How many people are going to be there in the evenings? Again, I don't think we really care what goes on inside the facility. We're worried about what goes on outside. We haven't heard anything about what types of people are included in here in the federal, the lowest custody level in the federal correction system. They haven't mentioned what types of people that includes. We're talking about federal offenders. I don't know anything about, you know, and I do not want to discriminate against, discriminate against people who, who are trying to come back properly into the community. However, I know that as federal offenders, they do at some point, what, what rights are foregone? Do federal offenders still have the rights to vote? Does that somehow fall under? I don't know enough about that. So I would, I would want to look into that and challenge that a little bit more. Oh, here was the, the water quality control basin, they're going to be on their own water, own water quality control basin. That tells me that the sewer system can't handle the amount of, of water that this facility would, would put off. Is that correct? So if they can't handle their water in either a septic system or on the city sewer, then that means there's going to be a basin, I guess, for processing their water. So the folks, what I haven't heard processed yet is that there's going to be some type of, I guess, a ponding of water on, on the site? Is, I don't know.
We can't respond. You've got to give us the testimony, and we're not able to answer that.
Okay. I'm sorry if you don't approve of the way I'm presenting it, but I think I'm, I'm trying to get my, giving a list of questions that I would prefer to be answered, looked into. The other thing is, residents at risk for public safety issues will be designated with a public safety factor required, restricted community movement, and enhanced supervision. I'm not sure what the definition of enhanced supervision is. Much of this in here, there was some, down on, I'm sorry, I'm on page three now, and I didn't go through all of it, by the way, so don't worry. Residents will be referred to dismissed charities centered by the Federal Bureau of Prisons or U.S. District Court. On average, residents are under dismissed care ninety to one hundred and twenty days. During the first part of their supervision, they reside at the facility. During the last part of supervision, they reside at an approved home. So there's, there's someplace they're going to go after this that's where they will go out into the community? Is, is, where do they go from here? Is this a forty-five to sixty-day facility? I think that's what I read. So not only is it going to be people who are within the community and have a vested interest in it because they've been there and they like the community, but it's going to be a rotating, a rotation of people who are going to come in and out, and in and out, and in and out. That's a concern. Catch basin. Okay. So those were my notes going through it. Again, appropriate buffer? I don't know that there is an appropriate buffer that would make folks in this particular community feel better. Compatible with use of, it is, okay, so it's not compatible with the use of the land with the surrounding area, except for on one side. Special use? That was under the special use. When was this, when was this made into proper land use? I heard information regarding someone named David Evans, who's supposedly a real estate agent in the area, never heard of. The facility on, the facility, well, maybe we should make himself known. The facility on Ramsey is nowhere near, I kept hearing a lot of things about this place on Ramsey. That is nowhere near the amount of residential that, that this place is being proposed to be near. There is no comparison, and that's down closer to me.
So what I'm going to have to do is probably end your testimony there because it's, it's now starting to repeat the same statements of fact, and it's not adding anything additional to the information, so thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, our next speaker is-
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. George Turner.
No, sir. To the clerk, Mr. Turner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm George Turner. Excuse me. My home is at 1012 Kane Road. I'm much closer than most of the other speakers. I've got Russell Jones with me and Kathy Harden there at 1018 and 1014. It's a less than two-minute walk from this facility, proposed facility to my house. The only reason I brought this simple GIS map is to show you the density of the area. If you're not familiar with it, every one of those little blocks you see is somebody's home. I don't think anyone that's come out and spoke tonight has anything against the attorney or dismiss or Mr. Tyson. I think it's a wonderful thing they're trying to provide. They're trying to provide it in the wrong location. We've, this is a dense residential area. We don't need this in our area for, for any reason. The Logan's Body Shop this next door would be considered legal non-conforming. He's been there forever. I'll try not to repeat what's been said, but let me give you a quick story. And when the city pulled out of the joint planning board in the mid-'90s and formed its own zoning commission, the city council appointed me to that first zoning commission along with other members. I was the chair the second year and I was the chair three or four times after that. I was also the chairman of your Board of Adjustments a number of times. I was the chair when you decided to eliminate it. Fortunately, when we were, when we were beginning the zoning commission that hears these now, y'all were kind enough to have the Institute of Government come down and give us training on what we needed to do. No one tonight has, has said anything other than the fact that none of us were notified. I'm outside of the 500-foot district. I'm sure that, that these folks have done the minimum that they were expected to do. The only way any of us heard about any of this was that a single elderly lady who lives on Kane Road received a letter from dismiss, I assume, inviting her to come to the church on Yadkin Road to hear about all the good things that were proposed. She hadn't got any information before that. When she got that, she didn't know what it was. So she gave it to her son, who took it to a car repair shop on Fort Bragg Road, who's somebody I've known all my life and he's kind enough to call me and say, "What in the world's going on?" And I said, "Man, I don't know." The problem here is that none of us have been notified and nobody's had an opportunity to even know when the special use permit was, was issued. We could've been at that meeting and some, I don't know how many people were there against it, but none of us were even aware of it. My wife is here and I'll put her on the spot because last week she went on the Nextdoor website and opened that can of worms to, to, you know, "Has anybody know what's going on?" Because we sure don't. And up to this date, about three or four days later, there's been over 200 responses to that. A majority of them are certainly negative and those that are positive came from people far outside of our neighborhood. But I'm, I'm sure that, that y'all know what is required. There's four things that the Institute of Government taught us that you have to do in order to have a special use permit. If the folks that have spoke to you tonight knew about that hearing before the zoning commission, three of these would never have happened. And I won't hold you up, but one is that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located according to the plan submitted. Three is that the use will maintain or enhance the value of adjoining or abutting properties or that that use is a public necessity. I contend this is not a public necessity. Number four is critical. It says the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted, will be in harmony with the area in which it's located and is in conformity with the most recent comprehensive land use plan. If these folks that have spoke tonight had an opportunity to be at the, and knew about it, to be at the special use permit hearing, I think there would've been enough opposition for all of that to have gone away. As far as the findings affect the value, if you look at the brochure that dismiss puts out, all of their facilities are in heavy commercial areas. This is not heavy commercial. As you can see by this that I've handed you, these are all homes. There's a little bit, if you pull out of this site they're, they're asking for and turn right, you're on Bragg Boulevard. If you turn left, it's all residential down there. There are other, not sure if they're legally operated, but there are other homes down there that have, there's a Soldier's Home on Rogers Drive and there are some other facilities down there. And of course, I know that Sigmund Street has a lot of problems and it's right in front of, of what they're proposing here. I guess that's about all I can say. Except, Mr. Dawkins, I want you to know that those of us who live in District Two are doing all we can to send the criminals to District Five.
Ms. Cynthia Dove?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Dove. I won't do too much speaking since we have a lot of people have spoken a long time. I just want to let you know that my husband and myself have lived at Shamrock Drive for 37 years. And we have a lot of concerns about the location of the halfway house in our community. We understand that you want to create an opportunity to support those who are released. It should not be at the risk of those who live in this community because it brings a lot of concerns about the safety of our community. And also, a lot of elders and a lot of young children walks up and down the road on a daily basis. So this being said, this is gonna be a financial concern with us and a health issue for a lot of people in the neighborhood that do have health issues, worrying about whether someone gonna be coming to your house or anything happen. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of your time discussing this 'cause a lot of things have been discussed that I was probably was gonna say. So I thank you for the opportunity and I'm gonna save the next time for someone else to come up and voice their opinion. Thank you so much.
Mr. Russell Jones?
My name's Russell Jones. I live at 1018 Kane Road. And I'm gonna be very brief because you've heard most of what there is, I think, to say. There is one fact I wanna give you and that is, the attorney talked about a lot of facts he has, but we've not had a year to put any facts together because we haven't known about this facility. And you've heard that over and over. So I think at the very least, there ought to be a delay and some time given to the residents to learn what everybody has questions about and get answers and have a more open and fair discussion and decision made. Thank you very much.
Ms. Carol Shepherd?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I know it's getting late. I'm Carol Shepherd and I live at 919 Shannon Drive. And I don't have a lot to say. Our wonderful neighbors here have done such wonderful research. I don't think we need a lawyer. So anyhow, we don't oppose this, this thing that's gonna do so much good for the people that need that second chance. However, we have land all over this county. And it's just hard to understand. It really is. Why would you put such a facility in such a neighborhood? We've had hard times in the neighborhood keeping it like it is. And so we, we just don't need this. And I thank y'all very much.
Mr. Bobby Grantham?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'm the anchor, just want you to know. And I'm not built for the speed parts, so just hold on, okay? But I'm gonna get us through. My name is Bobby Grantham. I live at 3215 Rogers Drive with my wonderful wife and my son, who is a computer guru, I guess. But anyway, I'm opposed to the whole deal. The gentleman who came up and spoke first, I guess, works for the city, and one of the things he said was, "We're gonna list the expert witnesses." Okay. That leaves me completely out now. Well, these gentlemen here, I guess if I had worked for, was the attorney on record and I had four or five attorneys and aides, I guess I'd be pretty spotty and be an expert at something. And you presented your case very well, sir, very well. And I spoke with the chief, who hadn't common sense to leave before all this started. I'm a Department of Defense investigator. My wife works for a branch of Homeland Security. I'm a retired Navy guy. So I'm a little biased in certain aspects of our, our things here. And I'm gonna tell you, if y'all put up with this every meeting, y'all are gonna pay nearly enough. I'm gonna tell you that now. Just a couple of things. Sir, I apologize. I forgot your name. I don't wanna know it 'cause I'll forget it again. All right, sir. Wanting to add a couple of things. Bragg Boulevard, according to his, tremendously commercial. Of course it is. Back in the day, it was a drive. You got on Bragg Boulevard, you can go practically anywhere in the world. Now, from that, of course, things have changed. The mall came, downtown changed. Boulevard's been cut off now. So it's sort of a sketchy situation going on there. But it's still a main thoroughway. And we all know, just as we've heard about it, highly residential, as he said, beyond that. And it is, we've been there, I don't know, 31 years. I'm an expert at paying my taxes. I want y'all to know that, okay? Some of them are a little too high, I'm gonna tell you that, chief. I just wondered if somewhere down the road, if someone's done a crime analysis or a study on what kinda impact other facilities like this that they seem to be very good at it has done to the areas over two years, three years, five years, or seven years? Is this gonna be the kinda situation that we're gonna vote for now and snack up that $3 million for that property and get the tax on that and then it be developed and we're gonna look back on it one day and go, "Hmm, I wish I hadn't voted for that." That's something that y'all do. The crime analysis from the federal police department could do some projections for you for that. Security-wise, if it wasn't such a concern, then, I mean, it almost sounds like something out of a Black Site Ops movie. You know, bio-readers, fingerprints, eight-foot privacy fence, 40 cameras. It don't sound like a halfway house. But what, I don't wanna know. You know, sorta if you think about it, I wonder the property value at the jail went up or down 'cause all those people are presumed innocent. All the folks that come in this proposed site are definitely guilty. Every single one of them. And I don't know what their rate of re-offending is. But I can tell you, I find it hard to believe that if they're gonna re-offend somewhere, they're not going on the bus and driving five blocks. They're gonna walk in my neighborhood. 'Cause I live less than a block from there. And they may or may not, I mean, that could happen even as we're speaking now, sorta like the, people don't lock their cars at night. You know, it could happen anywhere. But if you put 100-plus people who are known offenders in a situation, aren't you increasing the likelihood that that's gonna happen in your neighborhood? And truthfully, the real thing for, for my, my neighbor is fear. That's what you hear. They get up here and like me and ramble and stumble and, but the real thing is they're, they're, they're afraid. They are afraid. It's like the, the whole Crime Stopper thing. The whole remain anonymous is that people are afraid of thugs. They shouldn't be, but they are. I didn't say "we," I said "they" 'cause I'm not. And this concerns me a great deal. By the time it gets up and rolling and can create a problem, I'm 65, so I, you know, by then I probably wouldn't be able to hold my gun no more. But I'm telling you, if it's such a great deal, why can't we be, what would you be saying if it was being built a block from your house? Would that be okay? Now, I come off of B Street, so I'm not a, mm, oh yeah, girl. I mean, ma'am, sorry. Her head popped right up. Oh yeah, I'm a B Street boy. So when I say that, you know, I might be a little biased in my slant on this deal, trust me. And you know, again, I appreciate everybody's time. If nothing else, if you can't vote no, shame on you. If you can't vote no, at least postpone it and give us enough time to, to try to put something else together. 'Cause really, we're just homeowners as opposed to our esteemed opposition. And he's right. If you go by the letter of the law, okay, they met their criteria and apparently it, planning-wise, zoning-wise is good. But two things. One, either it's already rubber stamped and it's a go or you have authority to stop that. I mean, that's what America is, right? That you stand up and we as a group, we voice our concern. Now, sometimes it's a little long-winded. That's me. So, you know, I appreciate your time and I hope y'all don't have a flat tire going home. Okay.
Mayor, we have no further speakers, but Mr. Charleston had asked for time for rebuttal.
Mayor, could I have a minute to say one thing before he does? I think I have some time left.
Yeah, yes, sir. No, sir, Mr. Turner. Thank you. Mr. Charles? I think you've about used up your time today.
Glad I got run flat tires. Okay. Let me just respond to a couple of things. One, I wanna remind the council, I know I don't have to, but just for the record, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding and the only thing you consider is those eight points. That is the law. That's the, what your ordinance says notwithstanding. And I'll pause here and I'll ask your city attorney, is that the law? Okay? So she stated that that's the law. That's what you have to do. Point number one, I wanna start out by saying that I appreciate every comment that these folks made tonight. I will point out that it is not the proponents' responsibility to put notice out. We sent letters out to the same folks that the city sent their letters out to. We didn't have everybody's address, but we're not required to do that. But we had community meetings because we thought that that was an appropriate thing to do. We met with the community. We met with churches and, and discussed, you know, what our actual project was. But we were to invite everyone here tonight to serve on our community relations board so you can have input into what this project becomes. You know, if the city council is to grant the special use permit. Point number two, there was no one that spoke in opposition to this at the zoning commission meeting. There was, there was a meeting, a community meeting, that Brian Thompson, Pastor Brian Thompson, was kind enough to let us have it, Simon. was kind enough to let us have at Simon Temple, where we tried to broaden this thing out beyond the immediate community and make it broad enough so that folks could come in from all over the community to hear what this thing was about. And we spent about two hours out there talking about this particular project. And some of the folks in the room tonight were at Simon Temple. So I was a little disingenuous when one of the gentlemen that lives on Shamrock Drive said that nobody knew he was there. And I might also say that with respect to the issue of crime, I heard one person say that, you know, that there's a crime problem over in that area. As we indicated earlier, we believe this facility will stabilize the community. Let me tell you why. There's law enforcement that will be in and out of that facility all day. Not only local law enforcement, parole officers, federal officers, twenty-eight staffers. That facility will have incredible security. It's a residential facility, but those folks are held to a high standard of accountability. There was some discussion about the area outside the facility. And I heard, again, that Councilman Dawkins was talking about cameras all over the place, all over the city. There'll be thirty-six cameras at this facility, and a lot of those cameras are very, very high-resolution perimeter cameras. You guys have seen these television shows where cameras at one store are accessed to catch criminals or other people doing stuff somewhere else. This is the level of security that will be there. There will not be criminals walking the streets. Let's be clear on that. I don't know where that comes from. I'm sorry that folks believe that that's the case, but there will not be. Those folks have very restricted access times when they're outside the facility. And it's only to go to work, to go to school, so forth and so on. We talked about the type of accountability you have with the biometrics and all types of other double procedures to ensure that folks are where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be there. There was mention, a lot of them mentioned about the location of the site. I testified, and there is evidence in the city council materials that show that this is a very heavily wooded lot. It's in your books. I had a geometry teacher years ago that said it to me. I asked her a question, she said, "It's in the book, Mr. Charleston. All the evidence is in the book, and you can see the trees." It is the city's own aerial notification map that shows the heavy vegetation. And, you know, a couple of the folks that are here tonight, I met with today, and we talked about leaving the trees where they were. So if someone says tonight that there are no trees there, that's simply not true. Now, one of the things I wanna point out to everybody again, this is a heavily regulated environment. If folks are not where they're supposed to be within minutes of the designated time, all sorts of law enforcement are engaged, from the federal marshals to local law enforcement, the whole nine yards. This is gonna be a situation where there are not people walking the streets in any way. And there's nothing in your materials, there's no facts, there's no evidence that suggests that. And I would ask for you to disregard that. Conversations about a done deal, made-up stuff, made-up conversations. I would dare someone say that I said that. We had one person that talked about the increase of drugs, homelessness, and prostitution in that area. That was their testimony. This facility, we believe, will stabilize that particular area. Not everything down on Hilton Drive, across Pamley Drive, but the area immediately adjacent to this facility. Ladies and gentlemen, your own ordinance says that O and I is a buffer between commercial and residential. That's your ordinance, that's your law. You adopted that, that's your rules. The city published these notices for the zoning commission meeting for ten days. Madam City Attorney, is that what happened? Wasn't it published? Is Mr. Harmon here still?
He's back here.
There he is, they said you left. Thought you were gonna get a flat tire, didn't you?
No, there were, before the zoning commission meeting and before the city council meeting, the letters were sent out to all the property owners within five hundred feet, which is the circle you see on the map in front of you. As long, as well as back in, on January second, I believe, the property was posted, and there's been a sign on that property since January second, noticing that there was a special use permit that was being applied for and giving numbers to call to contact the city on it for questions.
Don't go anywhere. Can you broadcast that up on the city council monitors?
I cannot, that's, there.
There it was.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, do you see this hatch pattern up on your screens? Can you all see all those trees on there? Let me take a minute and look at that. They're trees. One of the other things I wanted to address was the issue of transportation. You know, some of the suggestions, ladies and gentlemen, was that this facility should be somewhere else. Not in my backyard. I remember some of that "not in my backyard" stuff many years ago. Not in my neighborhood, can't move over here. And so, what I'm saying to you is, in order for these facilities to work, it's just like affordable housing, Ms. Banks, just like affordable housing. You can't put affordable housing anywhere for it to work. It has to be somewhere where there's access to transportation, access to amenities like grocery stores or drugstores, doctors' offices, all of that kind of stuff. 'Cause they get scored on that. And the federal government looks for those same kind of criteria. There was no, like, just happenstance that this facility was located and identified where it is, Ms. Kinston, because what happens is they're scoring criteria. And folks look to that to say, "Okay, where do we, what are the amenities that need to be there, Ms. Jensen?" You got to have access to transportation. These folks have to go to work, they go to school, they do all of those things that they have to do. And they're heavily monitored. Even the President of the United States has opened an office of reentry, because he recognizes that after the crime reform bill of nineteen ninety-four, where, you know, four-hundred percent increase in incarceration in the United States, there had to be a place for these folks to come to when they got out. They're coming back into their communities. We also realize that it's cheaper, as lawmakers, it's cheaper to have these folks safely re-enter than it is to incarcerate them. Now, just-
How many minutes did you reserve at the end?
Well, you know what I asked, Mr. Mayor? What I asked, I asked your city attorney, "How many minutes?" And she said, "It's a quasi-judicial hearing." So I just wanna make a couple of points, and we'll sit down. We'll be quick. In terms of the folks that have been met with, in December of twenty nineteen, we met with Congressman Richard Hudson's Military Affairs Specialist. We met with the Fayetteville Kiwanis Club at their recreation center. We met with Representative John Soka to talk about what these plans were. On the twenty-seventh, we met with potential employers at North Carolina Works Reentry Specialist, that's the state of North Carolina. We met with Representative Billy Richardson and discussed the project. We met with the various hotel operators to discuss hiring these people. On December twenty-ninth, we met with the Open Arms Community Church folks at the invitation of Pastor Garner. On January seventh, we worked on potential employment opportunities with various quick-service restaurants. We also met with the folks at Fayetteville Urban Ministry and in the packet of materials, there's a letter of support from Fayetteville Urban Ministry and the Fayetteville Vet Center to introduce the program. On January eighth, we met with the Fayetteville Planning Department Technical Review Committee to discuss proposed changes to the project. Ongoing, we've met with any number of folks, including Cornerstone Church, on more than one occasion to talk about this particular project and how it would impact that community. And so, and so, what I will say at the, at the end, Mayor and members of council, is that we contend that we've met our burden with respect to the eight factors. And the one thing that I would point out in particular is that there is no evidence in the record that would suggest that there would be any diminution or adverse effect on property values, none whatsoever. And based on that, we'd ask respectfully that you approve the special use permit application. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, is that all the speakers?
Yes, sir, we have no further speakers.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing. So, Councilmember Hare, you had a question?
No, sir, Mayor, I, I'm gonna like to make a motion, but I'll wait until-
So we'll entertain if there are any questions from all of the testimony. We've got a lot of information tonight. Councilmember Waddell.
My question is, I have a couple. Cornerstone was referenced. Does the proximity to this school, or is there anything in proximity to this proposed location that poses a concern for the specified resident population? That's the first question. The second question is, if someone could please expound, probably Mr. Charleston, if you can expound on statement of fact number seven, the example provided was near Dunkin' Donuts. I think you indicated it was Manah Church. How does that relate to this proposed facility in terms of property valuation? And then the Oxford House, can we get a little information on that? Because one of the speakers referenced the Oxford House, did a little Googling, came back with some information on it, but I'd like a little bit more specific information in regards to the radius of the consideration.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, I understand that Councilmember Waddell has several questions, and I think they probably are best answered by different people. So perhaps could we take those one at a time, Mr. Mayor?
We will, yeah, we rattled off a few.
That's fine, 'cause that's the three I have. So the first one is the Cornerstone School. Does the proximity to the school pose any concern for the specified resident population? Most specifically, like, will sex offenders be staying in this property? And if so, is there a concern for their proximity to the school or any other facilities that may be in that range?
Councilmember Waddell, with respect to Cornerstone, this facility is outside the distance radius for, for the sex offender issue. It's outside the radius for other group homes and things of that nature. To the point about Oxford, don't know anything about Oxford, but we do have a letter in the package from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services that says there's no other group home, or therapeutic home, or halfway house within the mileage radius that the city council has established.
And I guess, since you're up there, you can also expound on the statement of fact number seven you addressed by providing Dunkin' Donuts as the example. Well, the location near Dunkin' Donuts, I'm guessing you were referring to Manah Church?
No, there is a, there is another halfway house that's located in the shopping center where Manah Church is, right over behind the Dunkin' Donuts in that vicinity, near the intersection of Country Club Drive and Ramsey Street. And directly behind the facility is a community called The Greens. They have an entrance way off Country Club Drive, I'm sure, Madam Councilman, that's in your district.
Are you referring to C A C I, KC Incorporated?
No, that's the defense company.
I'm not seeing it on this Google map.
It's near there.
So how does it relate to what you're referencing? So there was a question raised, how many beds does that facility have? What do they do? Is it exactly the same type of, I'm unfamiliar, and that is my district. I'm unfamiliar with that. Can you shed a little light on it?
The first thing I wanna do is let Mr. Tyson give you the name of the facility that's there now.
That would be helpful.
The name of the current contract provider is the Austin Wilkes Society.
Spell that for me.
Austin, it's A-
A U S T I N?
Yes, ma'am.
W I K-
Oh, no, A S T O N, W I L K E S, S O C I E T Y. They're also a nonprofit organization.
The question that you had about the values is, there was no evidence in the record. There's no evidence at all in the record that would suggest that property values would be adversely impacted. And so what we did is got a five-year comparison period for the facility that's located on Ramsey Street that Mr. Tyson just spoke about, and the residential community directly adjacent to that. And so, what you saw in that materials that I handed up, Councilmember Waddell, was data showing the sales and the sales prices and the sales increases, the property value increases for those properties in the neighborhood called The Greens, and The Greens only.
I'm familiar.
Yeah.
So, okay, let me ask one more question about this facility, because I just Googled it. So you're saying that this facility is in the same plaza as C A C I, as that building? So as I'm looking at this, I'm wondering, and again, I'm trying to see how the comparison is made, because this is kind of tucked into another set of businesses. And it seems as if it may be a bit of a small, a much smaller scale, if even comparative to what we're talking about potentially placing on Kane Road. So I just wanna make sure, because that is the sticking point for me. And I wanna be very clear, I wanna say this, and I wanna say it emphatically. Every citizen who has done their time deserves an opportunity to come back home and to come home somewhere safe and secure. And we cannot continue to criminalize people that have done their time. We just can't do that. But I do wanna make sure that as we're having this conversation, the finding of facts have been met. And so when we talk about property values, I'm just not seeing how that correlation is being made. Because I can see, I would assume that this would be something that would adversely affect the property value. And in order to be able to kind of put my mind at ease, it would be very helpful to be able to make the connection. And I'm just, right now, kind of not being able to get there. So if you can help me get there, that would be helpful.
Well, I think what we have to show, it's almost like you can't prove a negative. And so what you're saying to me is prove to me that the property value hasn't been or won't be adversely affected. Can't do that, because there's not been anything there to suggest otherwise. But what I can show you by way of a comparison is that there is a facility on Ramsey Street that's right next, I mean, that's in that shopping center. No doubt it's in the shopping center, Mr. Hare, but it doesn't have, I don't think that that's the distinction, because it's in the shopping center versus a freestanding facility. I would suggest to you that this facility is a much nicer facility, a much more appropriate, safe facility that fits right into the character of the surrounding areas. In fact, I think it's important to point out that the roof line of the facility was even changed at the suggestion of the city to be more in line with what exists, to look more residential, for lack of a better word. Initially, it had a flat top, we changed it to an A-frame, double-A-frame top. But going back to the point that you raised, and I think your point is spot on, there is simply no evidence in the record. No evidence has been presented. No evidence has been presented, no data to show that there will be an adverse impact on the property values. That is the standard. That is the standard, not proving that, uh, that, you know, there's not gonna be something happen, but there is no evidence in the record. And I, I have to look back at number seven. There has been no evidence presented that property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop would be negatively impacted. There's no evidence at all, and it's not, it's, I mean, it's almost like what you're asking us is, I have to put on evidence to show that, you know, that, you know, property values would be adversely impacted. What I think it is, is just the opposite. That the folks in opposition would have to present evidence that there would be adverse, uh, effects on the property value, according to your ordinance and your statute.
And I appreciate you taking the time to answer that question, but I do want to refer back, and then I'll yield the floor. I want to refer back to number seven. Number seven reads, "The special use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district," and, "And there has been no evidence presented that the property values and the ability of aging neighborhood lands would develop neg- lands to develop would neg- would negatively impacted," there, there must be a word missing there. But I would venture to say that the onus of proving that the special use allows for the protection of the property values would fall on the person who was attempting to bring in this, the special use. That would be my understanding and my interpretation. Would I be inaccurate in that? That if I wanted to build a, 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 a facility, it would be on me to demonstrate that finding of fact, that my facility would not negatively impact, or would allow for the protection of property values. Is that inaccurate, my understanding, or is that accurate? And then Mayor Colvin, I yield the floor after that.
So that's a decision of the council. The applicant has provided, uh, what they believe to be sufficient evidence as it relates to number seven. It would be up to the council, who is sitting as a quasi judicial body, to make a decision as to whether not only have they met seven, but the other, uh, seven, uh, criteria.
And, and I would say, Councilmember, uh, Waddell, the whole reason that we have public hearings is so that both sides can present evidence. And if this were a court of law, and evidence had only been presented on one side, then that's all that the council or the court would consider. And so in this case, what we, what we have, uh, submitted is an example of a similar facility, because, you know what, there's no facility in this location. So we can't say one way or the other. But what we can say is, based on a facility, a similar facility across town that's in your district, this is what has been the impact on property values there. And I don't believe that anybody prospectively can say that, that there was gonna be an adverse effect on these property values. In fact, what one of the folks that, uh, spoke, that came to the meeting at Simon Temple said, uh, and the folks that were at Simon Temple that night will recall this. He said, "I'm convinced that with all of the additional law enforcement that will be around this facility, that some of the issues that we have with homelessness and, and drugs and, and other things like that will be mitigated because of the presence of law enforcement." And it's just like Ms. Waddell, the, the different police substations that exist. You know, Mayor, you remember over on Jasper Street, when they put a police substation there, crime ran the other way. Every place there's a police substation or a high, uh, high presence of law enforcement, crime goes the other way. I'm gonna tell you this quick story, and I'm gonna call it on this question. I grew up on Essex Place. A military, you know, type neighborhood. Behind Elliot Circle, I heard someone here say that. Mr. Harry, you know where that is probably, you know, Ms. Ingram, you mentioned Elliot Circle, that's where I grew up. And as that neighborhood went through transition, all kinds of people that didn't believe in, abiding by the law start to come into that neighborhood. And DJ Hare, you remember Councilman Hare, you got the calls that said, "We need law enforcement in that neighborhood." Because the folks were hanging out selling drugs at the park, you remember that? Ms. Magby and all those folks were calling you, because you represented that neighborhood. The activity went away. The minute the police were pulled out of there, you remember Ms. Magby's house got shot up because there were, police weren't there. But when the law enforcement's in the community, the community is safer, everybody knows that. So to suggest that, that somehow that the neighborhood would become less safe because there's law enforcement there, I mean, it's just not correct.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Banks, the golfer?
Nevermind, she, he answered my question.
No, no, we've, we've closed the public hearing. Yeah, we, uh, Councilmember Kinston?
So I do have, um, three questions, I just want to make sure, just to clarify. On the map for the five hundred notification, um, buffer, um, understanding this is quasi judicial, but there was three papers that were presented. One was from McDonald's, one was for Burger King, and one was for Taco Bell. But if I'm looking at the five hundred notification buffer, none of those are actually in the buffer.
You want to know how they got in, in the mix? Because we went to them, asking them would they consider hiring these people. So that's what that, what those were, if you read, read on those letters, some of them say that we, uh, matter of fact, on my timeline that I just read to you, and I said we went to various quick service restaurants, we went to those places to say that we're, uh, we're contemplating putting a facility here. Will you guys consider hiring folks that live in this facility? And each one of those, uh, folks wrote letters back saying that they would.
The other question that I have is, in the five hundred buffer, right behind the C V S-
Yes, ma'am.
On Segments Road is, let me get the name of it right, Family Martial Arts Academy, which is right in the five hundred, um, notification. I guess what I was looking, looking for-
Yes, ma'am.
Is just anybody within that area, and I didn't see anything that was presented to us of anyone that was in favor based on the five hundred. If that makes, if I'm explaining that correctly.
It makes sense.
You're saying your question is, were there any folks within the five hundred foot radius?
Right, because these are outside the radius. The other ones that I looked at are also outside the radius. But I didn't see anything from anyone within the five hundred radius, notification.
I think we have one in the package, it may not have been what I handed up to you all individual, but in the package, there's a Mr. Robinson that lives within the five hundred, uh, owns property within that area. And, yeah, I, I can find it and hand it up to you, Madam, Madam Councilmember. Yes, I have it, Leon Robinson. It's, uh, may I approach?
Uh, to the, to the clerk, please.
This is in, this is in your notebook, and it's Leon Robinson, uh, um, owns property in that area.
He owns property, yeah. He lived, he lived on Bucktail Road. He lived on Bucktail Road. He owns property, he don't live there. She'll pass it.
And then the last question that I have, Mayor, thank you.
And I think, I think the criteria is folks that own property in that area, because, so there's some other folks, for instance, Ms. Kinston, that didn't get letters, because they rent property there. It's only the property owners that got the letter, and that's the city's ordinance.
Okay, and the last question is a, is a two-part question.
Yes, ma'am.
Over the last ye- year, I'm gonna say, was there any neighborhood watches, I know you said that you went to Simon Temple, but I was just curious if there was any neighborhood watches that was integrated or brought in to the discussion within that area, within that five hundred?
No, there weren't any neighborhood watch, uh, meetings brought in, no. We did separate- Speak into it. No, no problem, I can hear you fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. No, there weren't any community watch meetings that were attended, because, you know, when this process first started, you know, the first step we had to get through was the zoning process, and there's a lot of work that goes into putting this in together, designing buildings, working with the federal government, making sure that we're, uh, meeting all the criteria that they've established. But what we did was, because I want to step back, we're not required to do any of that extra stuff. But we did it because we wanted to put, you know, the word out that this is what we're doing, and we want to have a real partnership with the community. You know, that's what we wanted to do. That's why we went and had, uh, two or three separate meetings at Cornerstone. That's right there in that community. That's why we, uh, had a broader, a meeting with a broader group at Simon Temple was because we were trying to put the word out, and let me tell you this, this is what you'll appreciate. We went on W I D U on the radio and talked about this. Wes Cookman interviewed us on W I D U. Wes Cookman also sent out these notices to the two hundred and fifty pastors in his network to put the word out on the street with all the churches that there was gonna be a community meeting, uh, dealing with this issue. So we did, you know, we did a lot of things to put the word out, and some folks came. I didn't, I didn't speak to Commissioner Glenn Adams, but he got, he heard it on the radio, he came. Judge Lou Olivera heard it on the radio and came. And so that's, that's what we, that's what we did, to try to put the word out, which, you know, again, the city sends out notices to people in the five hundred mile radi- I mean, not five hundred mile, five hundred foot radius is what the city does.
Can, can the audience members please, okay, we're, we're trying to let the council receive and ask the questions so we can make an accurate decision. Thank you.
Did I, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ingram?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Um, Mr. Charleston?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, where it says, "Demonstrate how special use is configured to, uh, modernize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use of adjacent lands." I'm, I'm, um, questioning the fence that you described. Described to me, it, it sounds like a, um, security, uh, fence, and I'm, but I don't see that as being welcoming, and I don't know if I can, uh-
Well, well, uh, Councilmember Ingram, um, it's not a security fence, it's a privacy fence that you see in residential neighborhoods. It just happens to be eight feet tall, and it's a privacy fence. You know, there are two sides to a privacy fence. There's one side that looks unfinished, and then there's a side that looks finished. The way we proposed to do it was to have it finished on both sides, so it'd be attractive on both sides. But I met with, uh, the Dove family today, and I think Mr. Dove will tell you that the, uh, the fence that we proposed putting around the entire facility gave him some, you know, assurances that, uh, that there would be, you know, safety in that area. I mean, it's, again, under the city's ordinance, there's not a requirement for there to be a fence. There, we, we, we proposed to put a privacy fence there, uh, and, you know, right behind those trees so that the folks would have, you know, added security, I mean, privacy, screening. And there's already a chain link fence that most people have around their yards. We're not taking those down, we're just putting a privacy, an eight-foot privacy fence, and it's gonna be very attractive, privacy fence.
And my follow-up question, um, to safety concerns. It was mentioned that these, who, the residents in this, uh, proposed location will be working in the community. Seeing that they are offenders and they're reentry, and I do want to point out to something Councilmember Waddell said, we in fact, you know, can't continue to, to criminalize individuals for, um, the time that had, they have spent. But I do, um, some, when people, individuals come out, they come out with, um, mental, um, heartstrings upon them. And so when they're out working in those communities, what is to, what is, how are they being monitored in ca- to say that they won't go into communities or re- neighborhoods, um, um, and ra- break into cars or homes? Um, what, what, what ensures, um, that within thi- this plan?
Yeah, tha- that is an excellent question, it's a very, very intelligent question. Let, let me tell you this, let me respond this way, the first question you asked was, you, you made a statement that some of these folks come out and they have potentially some behavioral issues associated with it. This facility provides all sorts of behavioral support services. I mean, there is an array of services that you get there in this facility so that a person can have a successful reentry, period. So, I mean, there are behavioral health services, mental health services, all types of, there are folks, some of the folks come out still, uh, you know, once, they say sometime, once you are an alcoholic or a substance abuser, you're always a substance abuser. So those kind of counseling services are available, and, and, uh, there are all kinds of questionnaires that are taken of these people before they even qualify to be in this facility. That was point one. Point two is this, the, this is a, facility represents a reward system. Now, when folks, uh, become eligible and qualified to be in this facility, and you have to do both, what essentially happens is the remaining, let's just say it's six months left on your, on your, uh, incarceration, is spent in this facility. Now, if you do anything that violates any of the rules that could cau- can cause you to be sent back to where you were, whether it's like coming in late, missing the curfew. And what happens, which is really punitive about this, is if you are in your final six months, and let's say you've spent four months at the, at the, uh, the halfway house. If you, if you have a significant violation and you're called back, you have to do that whole six months over, but in the place where you are incarcerated. So it's punitive if you don't follow the rules. It's, it's, it doesn't reward, it rewards you for doing what you're supposed to do, but it's very punitive if you don't follow the rules, which is, for instance, for example, if you have to be in, I think it's a, it's like a five o'clock, six o'clock curfew-
Mr. Charleston?
-in the evening.
I'm gonna try to, try to get more precise on, on direct answers, uh, Councilmember-
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir, it did. Final question, was there a crime analysis study with our police department or a co- crime analysis study done for this area to speak to it, it being a great area for this? Um, speaking towards the safety of it, of the community?
You know, Councilmember, I, I don't know that there's ever, I, I don't think I've ever heard of a crime analysis having to be done for a community. It could be, I don't know, but, uh, not to my knowledge. I don't think that there's anything done like that for these type of things.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Uh, yes. Can you, um, expound, you have several letters, you know, from mayors, um, um, city police chiefs, pastors in the community, but one that stood out in Greensboro is talking about, um, a facility, um, like this, and has been successful since, since two thousand and three from the, uh, Mayor Nancy. So can you kind of expound to me what made you go out to get these type of letters and, um, kind of, kind of tell, tell us about the experiences that these people might, might have had that made a difference in their neighborhoods, uh, so it can kind of make us feel bet- a little bit better about this?
Is, is she sworn in?
Yeah, she's sworn in.
Okay.
Uh, Kathy Blue, Regional Vice President for Dismissed Charities.
Can you speak up a lot into the mic, please?
I'm sorry. Uh, Kathy Blue, Regional Vice President for Dismissed Charities. I oversee the Greensboro program and have for ten-plus years now. Greensboro has, has developed just like most, uh, inner cities has. We actually, uh, share- Uh, we actually, uh, share apartment, uh, parking lot area. We own the parking lot, but adjacent to that in downtown is, there's a library about one block away. There's a children's, uh, museum on down the street. There's a YMCA about three blocks in back. But we also have, Greensboro has experienced a lot of inner-city residential development. And, uh, we have a lot of residential, uh, multi-family residential, uh, uh, buildings, uh, going up and already occupied right in our own neighborhood now. In fact, Tanger Outlet is building their new, uh, cultural arts center about a block and a half from where, where our program is right now. And, um, to speak about reentry and, and to bring it back home, there was a resident of our program several years ago who went through successfully. And she was a dog groomer. She learned that trade, how to, how to groom animals. She actually leased a space from the building that shares one of our parking lots, and she has a successful dr- dog grooming business today. And it's a testament that if we give people the opportunity to thrive, they will thrive. And, uh, I just wanted to share that as too, as a personal story, because so many times we, we don't put names and faces on what we do, and this just brought it back home. I wanted to share that as well.
Yeah, it's a couple of, uh, more questions, Mr. Mayor, if you can set up. What, what is the, um, the size of your facility and how many people does it house?
Currently, we have forty-seven beds. Uh, we are due to expand to eighty-four beds. We have, have had up to sixty people on home detention in, in addition to the forty-seven beds that we have.
Same type of concept that we're talking about here.
It is the Federal Bureau Prisons contract, and this will, will mimic that same contract. In fact, they'll be identical.
So can you tell me a little bit about if there's any been, any, uh, increase in crime in that areas since that time?
No, as, as always been, has, uh, has already been presented to council today. There's a lot of law enforcement presence. There's, uh, a lot of probation officers that come to meet with their, their clients. We call them residents. We don't call them offenders. We definitely don't call them inmates. These are people coming out into the community, men and women. And a lot of them will be supervised once they leave us for three, five, seven years, sometimes even longer. So proba- probation comes, they are law enforcement. Uh, we have visits from the sheriff's office. In fact, this was our second year that we, uh, joined with the Greensboro Police Department to do offender job fair. Our first year, and, uh, we work with the community to resolve the problems and not create problems. Right across the street from us is a law office. And right next to that is a local church that has actually adopted our residents. Uh, our residents go freely there for worship as they do other places, depending on their religion. We're expect, we're respectful of that. And, uh, they come over, do disciples, cycle classes. They do Bible study. Uh, but we also have residents that go and volunteer for habitat, you, for humanity. They vol- they volunteer at Barnum's House, which is a nonprofit that takes donations from.
So, yes, ma'am, if you can just answer his specific question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, you answered it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, I did have one question and then I guess we'll, uh, try to, try to call for some, uh, action here. Um, one of my colleagues, Councilmember Ingram, mentioned, what type of services do you offer in this facility that are wraparound services for people who are transitioning back into the, to society? Is, are there, are there counseling services? Are there, you know, do you check for substance abuse? I mean, what type of wraparound services you have to increase the likelihood of success?
First of all, Mayor, when, um, every resident comes in, they're given a risk needs assessment. And, uh, that, uh, we, that along with what the assessment that the Department of Justice, the Federal Bureau Pris- Prisons has done, we do an individual program plan because we don't believe in putting everybody in the same box. In, in fact, research shows that if you give people, require people to do services that they don't need, they actually do worse. So that's the, that's the concept for individual program planning. Uh, as a result of that risk needs assessment, it dictates what their movements will be in the community. It dictates how many times that they get drug tested. On average, most of our residents get tested four times randomly a month. And, um, they also get an alcohol test every time they're in the community in return. Uh, services that we also offer is, uh, we do out, uh, professional services for mental health, substance abuse, and, uh, even family counseling with the coordinating through the Federal Bureau Prisons and the private con- contractor in the facility that has the licensing to provide those counseling. We also do family orientation. We actually go out to the family, talk to them, let them know what the rules are. We do parenting classes.
We gotta shorten your response up, okay?
We do parenting classes. All of our classes are geared for individual success.
All right.
And, um, hopefully that answered that.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. I appreciate it. All right. So, uh, I've got a council member that, uh, had to step out for a minute, so she comes back, we'll need to make a decision, council, on this, uh, request.
I'm gonna make a motion.
No, I'm, I'm gonna make the motion.
You gonna make the motion? You will make the motion?
I already pushed the button to make the.
Yeah, I'll wait on her to come back.
Where did she go?
We have, we have, we have no meetings sometimes.
All right. So, uh, uh, Councilmember Wright.
Councilmember here.
I made a request to make the motion. Okay.
I did it earlier.
Yeah. All right. Okay, Mayor, um, thank you for, uh, I'm gonna move forward in making a motion, but also I want to make a statement that, um, I, um, I, I can't pretend that I haven't heard, uh, my citizens or our citizens tonight. So, um, I would like to make a motion to deny, uh, this request, this special use request to allow a halfway house to be located at, um, the nine oh one, nine oh five Kane Road location. All right, it's a motion by Councilmember here, uh, for denial. Madam Attorney.
Mr. Here would need to cite the, uh, findings.
Fact that he's supporting that, yeah. And council, to be reminded, just to kind of reiterate that we, uh, by state law guided by these eight findings of facts that are in our, uh, in our CAM. So, Councilmember here, uh, can you revise that to include, uh, the support of your denial?
Um, I would like to consider, as far as the, go ahead, you wanna show me something? Okay. Uh, to consider for the finding of fact is, um, there was no, uh, evidence to, to, to support the, um, the lowering of housing, uh, uh, revitalization, uh, of value. There was no support. Uh, we did not have a, I felt we should have had a, um, um, find out about the police patrolling efforts and what the concerns, how they match up to a, a building such as this. And we did not receive that. So I would like to use those two as a finding of fact.
So there's a motion, there's a motion by Councilmember here. Um, i- is there a second?
Finding effect number seven?
Yeah, is there, is there a second to the motion? All right, is the second back?
Yes. Yes, sir. Uh, yes, ma'am, yes, sir. If we look into our, our items, we have, uh, number seven, and it's, uh, I would like to use that, uh, that there has been no evidence to present the property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop would, uh, they would be negatively impacted.
All right. So there's a motion by Councilmember here, there's a second by Councilmember Waddell. Uh, as we go into discussion on the motion, um, again, I think, I think this is kind of a difficult case because, uh, certainly I support second chances. Uh, we're doing all we can to, uh, for expungement purposes and those kinds of things. However, I do certainly, uh, understand, uh, the, the members of the community, but in this case, we're bound by eight specific criterias that the court gives us. So, and I know it, uh, throughout this process, you know, the council hadn't been very, uh, responsive because everything you give us is sworn testimony and we're supposed to start with a clean slate and base it on those eight things. What I will say about number seven, as it pertains to the motion that's on the floor, um, when you do an appraisal of property, all you have is a comp, a comparison to a sale within a certain place. And so I did not see any evidence submitted that supports that this will decrease the value. Um, the only evidence that was actually supported were similar sales that showed a consistency of the value. So is there any evidence that we're missing that was not entered into the testimony before the public hearing closed that supported that? It's a rhetorical question, so I'm not asking for an answer, debate. This is just a discussion phase. Madam Attorney, is it, uh?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make sure, um, I wasn't clear if there was a second on the motion.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Waddell seconded it. So we're in the discussion phase.
Thank you.
So. Uh, red. So, um, the evidence that was submitted is what we are, we're guided by. And the evidence that I've seen, uh, shows a consistency of the values. Um, although I di- I didn't see any evidence to the contrary. So, uh, as we vote, if I have to consider just the, that point that you raised on number seven, uh, that, that's a part that I'm, I'm challenged with. Uh, Councilmember Waddell? Oh, Ingram, I'm sorry.
Um, I am, can the representative representing the, um, that might be, uh, Mr.?
Nah, testimony's.
Oh, oh, okay. Um, I would just, my, I guess my question would be, is Dismissed Charities open to considering another location?
Well, right now, it, it's on the table. With this location, I, I guess they would probably have to.
Resubmit.
Amen the process, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, sir. I want to go back to, um, point number seven. So during this discussion phase, as I, as I interpret point number seven during this hearing, I interpreted that it is not incumbent upon the community to represent that this will adversely affect their property values. This says that the special use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district. And I, I'm, I, I am comfortable with the motion by Councilmember here because I do not see where it demonstrated that. I don't think that we can look at the property on Ramsey Street. I think if they would have brought us a property, one of their other properties and demonstrated, um, the consistent maintenance of property value or the inclination of property value, that may have been a little bit different. But they selected a completely different entity of a different scale, a different level of setting. It, it's not equivalent. And so it did not, for me, prove that the property values would maintain or increase. Uh, and so that is why, for me, number seven is a valid, uh, uh, Councilmember here's, um, motion is a valid motion that I, that I stand beside it in a second.
Okay. All right. Uh, Councilmember Davis?
I retract that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So have motion on the floor, the hair, uh, Waddell motion for denial. Uh, council, I'll look to you for your votes to deny. So a vote to the, in the green is to support the denial. Voting the red is to, uh, vote against it. So look to you for your votes.
Do we need to pause and get the city attorney time to finish?
I didn't know. She was contem- she normally notifies me by lights, so. She, yeah, she'll notify us by lights. It's ti- it's time to, time to vote, guys. So, uh, so, let me reset the board. The motion on the floor is to deny. So if you are in favor of denial, your button is green. If you are against the denial, uh, then your button is red. So look to you for your votes. Okay. Oh, she, this is not your vote. She's recused. All right. Madam Kirk, uh, motion to denial carries, uh, voting in favor of denial. Banks, McLaughlin, Ingram, Hair, Kingston, and Waddell. Voting in opposition, Davis, Dawkins, Wright, Cole. Motion carries. Item. Let's take a few, a few minutes break, council. Uh, we'll do five minutes. This time just for. Uh, we'll do five minutes this time just for that. Alright, council, we will call the meeting back in session. Uh, item eight point zero two is the adoption of the downtown urban design plan, Merkison Road, Bragg Boulevard area study. Brief presentation by Mr. Torres Freeman.
Mayor, members of council, Torres Freeman planning zoning divisional manager. What I have for you tonight is actually a two for one. We have the downtown urban design plan and the Merkison Road, Bragg Boulevard area study. Now, both of these plans were actually presented for you on February second at your work session by Steve Alderman with UDA, you, design, urban design associates and Stewart, Inc. Listen here, this is our study area, which is the core of Fayetteville, and it coincides with our municipal service district. Um, as you can see here, the boundaries for it is Rowan and Grove Road and goes to Cool, North Cool Springs, um, which also goes along Russell Avenue and Bragg Boulevard and Rutherford, Rutherford Drive. When we did our, our series of meetings with the public for this plan, uh, they gave, gave us a lot of input, uh, regarding a lot of strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities. As you see, we have a lot of strengths near our ballpark facility along Hay Street. We have some weaknesses, um, along, you know, outer perimeters, and we have some opportunities located within some of those areas. Within the plan, they, um, identified several key initiative areas, which is to stimulate the ballpark investment area, uh, create a downtown district, improve downtown gateways, foster downtown living, strategically locate cultural venues, improve mobility and streetscapes, as well as enhance parks and trail connections. For stimulating the ballpark area, uh, they wanted to leverage the ballpark and neighboring investments by transforming the adjacent blocks into a mixed-use sports and entertainment complex area. Uh, this will be done by consolidating of surface parking into public-owned garage, supporting multiple redevelopment sites, as well as redevelopment city-owned buildings or properties into tax-paying and mixed-use developments. Another form is actually creating a downtown district. Uh, by doing so, it's actually, um, expanding the boundaries into Russell Street, um, having some design guidelines that will benefit the entire area, rezoning the area into one zoning classification. Next, we look at improving our downtown gateways. If we look at Grove, Ramsey, Rowan, and Green Street intersections by doing some type of enhancements there, as well as looking at the Bragg Boulevard and Hay Street area, doing it, so therefore, we can have some type of meaningful character when people are going to the downtown area. Another is fostering downtown living, and that is creating some type of village and multi-use type of, uh, multi-use type of areas within the downtown uh, by having mixed use and, and mixed residential type, uh, zoning types, uh, for a better downtown living atmosphere. We would like to also talk about the strategically located cultural venues. Uh, one of the areas that has been talked about is a, is a proposed, uh, cultural site. Uh, uh, you see here, they have an eight, eight hundred foot minimum that would go around the ballpark. Areas within here are generally not as attractive as looking for areas outside that area. Uh, they have identified six other areas within the downtown that could be a great location. We want to improve mobility in our streetscapes, and we can get that accomplished by adopting a complete street, streets policy, which commits the city to the construction of new or reconstruction of existing streets to accommodate, accommodate all modes of transportation, as well as a few. We want to enhance our parks and trails connections. We have Rowan Park, we have Festival, Festival Park, Cross Creek Park. Um, and then, we want to be able to connect all these parks through a different type of, uh, network system. The implementation action plan is actually updating the zoning and development standards, so therefore, we can have some type of consistency, uh, within the area, focus on economic development strategies, benefiting off the, the construction of our stadium, improve public realm and multimodal connections, widening some of our street networks, um, improve parking management, which is something that is being currently looked at, and improving our stormwater management and flood mitigation. That includes our, um, downtown urban design plan.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any questions for Mr. Freeman? I know we've looked at this kind of extensively. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, sir. On page eighteen, can you go back to page eighteen quickly?
Eighteen?
It's the page about the cultural arts that discusses the performing arts. I'll start my question while you're doing that. It's no secret that the county is having the conversation about building a performing arts center. So, if we at the city level adopt this plan, how does, how does this page correspond to what their plans may or may not be? Are they also looking at this plan to adopt it, or is this just the city of Fayetteville adopting this plan?
When looking at this, when this plan was actually being discussed, um, UDA actually had conversations with the county uh, regarding potential locations. They were, had identified six different locations throughout within the downtown area. They looked at the pros and cons of, of each site, and then they, but ultimately, the decision would still fall upon the county to determine exactly where that cultural arts center would be located.
So, the county does not have some version of this plan that will be before them that they will adopt or, or, or not adopt?
They have all the sites identified, fr- according to this plan.
But are they going to, if we adopt, I'm specifically speaking to this page, if we adopt this plan, is this page relevant because we are not building the, the performing arts center? Or is this just a recommendation that was made that?
This is just merely a recommendation.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Ingram?
Um, my, thank you, Mayor. My questions are a bit similar to Councilmember Waddell's in terms of adopting this plan. When adopting this plan, are, are we voting to say we're going to implement what the scope of this plan, such as, uh, to improve mo- mobility and streetscapes? And looking at these figures of the streets and the sidewalks? And then jumping over to, one, things that I'm mostly concerned about, expanding the footprint of, um, uh, the downtown district um, to other streets? And, um, that will also encompass rezoning, um, I, I believe so. But then I also know that we don't currently allow certain residential. Um, so I just want to know with the, with the dop- this, adopting this plan, are we, are we saying yes, that we're going to implement, um, certain things? Or will we adopt it and then start to foul away at it?
So, Mr. Manager, can you, uh, clarify?
Yes, sir, um, Mr. Freeman and, uh, Dr. Newton, um, did a touch on some of this earlier when we looked at the, um, owl on the tree, and, um, the second picture gave you greater clarity. And so, what you're able to do here is you're kind of telling us the direction you want to go in. Um, as you mentioned, um, Councilmember Ingram, um, for the, um, housing types, which may not be allowed in the current downtown, that of course would have to be an element that if implement, if adopted, staff would begin working to bring back those various elements to implement. Now, that does not mean that as things come back to you to be implemented, that you would agree with all of them because you would have a great, more detail with each one of those items that would come forward. Uh, Dr. Newton is, is here and, uh, Doc, I mean, Mr. Freeman as well, I hope I didn't misspeak, guys, on that.
You're correct, okay. And as far as the zoning district, uh, expanding the downtown, that is one of our initiatives that we're already trying to put in place. And we're looking at, we're identifying properties that are not consistent. Uh, there are several different zoning types that we have within our downtown area or what we can consider possibly being within its boundaries. So, we can always, uh, do administrative rezonings for those areas and make sure that now we have, correct, have a consistent zoning and have consistent development standards that will accommodate it, accommodate that request.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, thank you, Mayor.
Alright, so I'm opening and closing the public hearing. I don't think we have any speakers.
No, we don't have any speakers for this item.
Alright, so we'll open and we'll close the public hearing. Alright, council, any further questions for Mr. Freeman? Alright, alright, council, I'll look to you for action, for adoption, or, or not. Okay, Councilmember Waddell?
I, I, I need, um, a, a more succinct answer because I have the same question that Councilmember Ingram has. What's next? If we adopt this plan, the short version, what's next? Do we go to work and implement any information? Do we have to hire another consultant to tell us how to, how to implement the information? What are the next steps? Because we've adopted a lot of plans with a little action. So, how do we get, if we say we like this, how do we get the most action out of this plan?
Well, it's like I stated, we've already started identifying properties that are not consistent or not zoned according to downtown. Um, we have several different zoning classifications within that area that we're looking at that could possibly be rezoned to downtown. Um, as far as the e- economic development strategies, we have a lot of partners that we can work with and, and looking at those. Um, improving the parking management, that has been a, uh, I think it was, the, a study was done last year um, by Waller Consultants that actually, that actually.
I'll have you pause for a second. Are you saying that the next steps are we wait on you guys to do your thing and then you come back to us? Or do we need to be doing something to make sure that this keeps, that this train keeps rolling?
We will definitely do our, do our part in presenting something before you all, um, moving forward.
Uh, Councilman Davis?
Uh, good evening, sir. I, I think one of the things that, that, um, that we reoccuringly see is, um, and as we move forward, I think it will help especially new members, um, is to find some element, at least initial element of timing. Meaning, i- in the six month, in the next six months, four months, we, um, you know, intend to do A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Within the next six months, we hope to come back, the city manager is good at this, giving us, we hope to come back with, you know, not just that we've identified some, but we have a refined list of what those properties look like. So, I guess a lot of, a lot of us could hopefully, a lot of this could hopefully be, um, be alleviated with maybe some timeline. Um, and if it's six months, four months, you know, give us two months to come back with an updated list and refine it. But we hope that moving forward, we get some more timelining along the way. So, there's a, something to mesh up what our intent is, or something to match what our intent is with a, a deadline to bring back information. This is information stuff. This isn't putting buildings up. This is, like you said, identifying, um, what properties, what types of properties fit in what area best based on this plan that we are about to approve. So, just, I just wanted to make that comment.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Davis. Alright, council, if there are no other questions, I'll look to you for action. Uh, Ca- Councilmember Ingram?
Um, Ma- Mayor, hm, oh, Mayor Coven, I'd like to move to, oh, ma- I would like to adopt the downtown, oops, sorry, y'all. I wasn't prepared.
It's okay.
Um, I would like to, um, move to adopt the downtown urban design plan in Merkison Road, Bragg Boulevard area study.
Okay, and there's a, there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, there's a second by Councilmember Kinston. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, is that a vote or a discussion? You just made the motion, okay. Alright, okay, alright, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Alright, Councilmember In- Ingram, okay, alright. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Alright, I know, we're rubbing our eyes, y'all. Alright, uh, item eight point, uh, zero three. Um, the, the council, um, I think Councilmember Dawkins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because of late hour and there's errors in this, uh, comprehensive, uh, future land use map and plan, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, discuss, uh, this further at our April work session and that, uh, we have, um, uh, some high-level discussions to determine. Uh, I've been getting emails and phone calls saying, you know, there's specific things that are not correct in it with the zone. So, that's, that's my motion.
Alright, so there's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, if I understand it correct, to bring this back to the next work session so that we can kind of look through this a little, little tighter. And there's a second by Councilmember Wright, uh, any, any discussion, discussion? You're voting? Yeah, alright, yeah, alright. Any discussion on the motion? Alright, if not, we'll look for, to you for votes. Alright, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Mr. Freeman, we'll see you in April on that one. Uh, item, yeah, item eight point zero four is the phase five public hearing, uh. Alright, Mr. Brown?
Um, Mayor and councilmembers, I'll defer to you. You've seen my presentation already? And I'd like to, I'd, I, I would prefer to give the time to the people who are here to speak, and unless you want to see my presentation, I'll defer.
No, we, we know what you know. You know a lot.
Alright, so, um, so I'll let you, I'll defer.
Very patiently.
And I'm here, if there's any questions after the meeting, if anybody has questions, to do that. And I'll just remind you that after this, you are to take action, whatever it might be. Thank you.
Or not, right, yeah, Madam Clerk, uh, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, we have three speakers for this item. The first speaker is Ms. Beverly Allen. Beverly Allen.
She's in the bed.
Our next speaker is Marion Garvin. And final speaker is Mr. Gilbert Hall.
Phil, thank you for your patience, sir.
I'm normally in the bed this time, I'm not. I would like to start by asking, how many of y'all would like to take sixty thousand out of your 401K and stuff and give it to PWC? That's exactly what I'm being asked to do. I've, I've got thirty years of investment in this stuff out here, and now they want me to give sixty thousand to PWC for the pipes I don't need or don't want. I mean, I talked to people up and down King, King Road out there, I couldn't find one person that want these pipes out there. The only people that want these pipes out there is PWC and y'all. And the man at PWC says it's up to y'all whether I have to pay that or not. It's not up to him. He says it's up to y'all. And I'm being asked to take sixty thousand out of my retirement fund and give it to PWC. And that's exactly what I'm being asked to do. I have twelve houses out there, and they're rental properties, and I've spent thirty years getting that stuff together. I've got my, all my money invested in that stuff, and I don't have sixty thousand dollars to give PWC. When I was annexed fifteen years ago out there, one of the things they said I was going to get from it was sewer lines. They didn't, nobody said I want me to pay for them. According to them, I was going to get it, but I've been paying taxes in the city for fifteen years, and nobody up here can tell me one thing I've gained from it, not one thing. My service went down as anything, because I can't get my trash picked up part of the time. And before, I had a great trash service, never missed me. Like Mr. Davis over here, I left a message two weeks ago for him to call me. He's not called me back. I finally got his phone number, and I called him, and I left a message for him to call me. He ain't called me, so I feel like I have absolutely no representation down here. Now, that's how I feel about it. Like, I got twelve lots out there. I pay, what is it? I forgot what it is, we're paying, what, seventy-two dollars a year for drains, for storm drains? Ain't no storm drains in my neighborhood. I pay for, I pay for street lights, I pay them for myself out there. There's no city straight light, street lights out there, and there's about thirty vehicles there. We pay for bus service. There's no bus service out there. No bus service runs within about four miles of my house, and I'm being asked to pay sixty thousand dollars to PWC for pipes we don't even want. PWC don't have no water or no wires out there. That's good. Thank y'all for your time.
So, so I will say this, council, there was a, a?
Ten of these houses out there that I'm talking about cannot be hooked to sewer line when they run the wipe down King Road. They're not going to run it down in the neighborhood, so ten of these houses cannot be hooked up without major expenses.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, is that the last?
Yes, sir, we have no further speakers.
So with that, I'll close that. What I was going to say, council, is, count the PWC liaison, Councilmember Davis and myself, had a conversation with Ms. Shaw, Chairwoman of PWC and Mr. Trago. They are going to come back to, they're looking at some policy changes for these special exceptions. So if we could possibly delay this to give them an opportunity to see what they were proposing, from my understanding, they were, they were looking at, they're looking at updating the policy that they currently have. And so I think if, if, Mr. Brown, you had something to add to that, sir?
Yes, just, I understand what you're saying, just to be clear, because we are, Mr. Trago has asked me to work on exactly what you said to do, and we're working on that. I understand Mr. Hall's concern. First of all, the request for the council to assess Mr. Hall's property won't come until after the project area he's in is constructed, which is going to be about a year and a half or two years from now, and the assessments would be several months after that. So while I understand his concern, all we're asking for tonight is the ability to proceed with construction, which I know you want to do, you want to keep them moving forward and not delay it. So my point would be, by delaying it, it doesn't really make his problem go away, and his problem is two years out.
Well, the issue that, that I was thinking about is if there is a policy adjustment to running laterals all the way to properties that will never be developed, which is one of the criteria that they said they were revisiting, that will impact some things if, if there's, if, if there's some type of waiver program. So all of that's speculative, of course.
You're absolutely right. So the, our, we've already designed it with laterals to each of its properties, and what we would do is if the policy changed, we would just not install those laterals. So it's all, it's already designed to do?
Is it going to impact you tremendously if we wait until our next council meeting to take this item?
I don't think tremendously, but it, it would be against what you wanted to do, which is to keep it moving. So that's all I'd say. And, and let me, let me just say one other thing. So both Mr. Hall and Mr. Sherman Davis, who was here at the last meeting, we are working with city staff on possible solutions that are specific to their situation. So there's two things going on. We're working with those two property owners, Councilmember Davis is aware of it, and city staff with Dr. Whitfield, we're looking at situations where together with the city, we could do things that would resolve their issue about what those assessments would be, and we are also working on the thing that Ms. Shaw and Mr. Trago asked you. So we're working in two fronts to try and address the issue. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right, well, council, as you consider this, I would ask that we could possibly put a pause on it and to give them an opportunity. Madam Attorney?
So just to clarify, Mayor, as Mr. Brown said, the requested action was to authorize the construction. It is not to impose the assessment tonight.
Yes, ma'am, I understood, but, but they were considering some things that would relate to the construction and, you know, which included acceleration. So they wanted to come back with a couple of things that this council has said were a priority, and so I'm not sure if two weeks is going to, is going to impact Mr. Brown. Okay, all right. So Councilmember Dawkins?
A motion to delay this discussion. I've heard two weeks. If that's the general gist of the council, I'm fine with that.
All right, uh, second, there's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, there was a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I look to you for your votes. Adam Jensen? Okay, all right, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous? All right, see you later.